Ready?
Yeah.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. It's a little after nine. Roll call. I believe everybody's here today, right? You don't have to do... Do what you do.
Roll call.
Roll call. All right. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Rich.
Here.
Deb.
Hi.
Lori.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
And Sonny.
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda, approval of the January eight, 2018 minutes. Is there any comments, concerns on that? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Oh, we gotta do a roll call.
Roll call. My mistake. Go ahead.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
All right. Item number two, approval of the January seventeen, 2018 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those? If not, let us know if you have any comments or questions. If there's none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Jerry, roll call vote, please.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Approval of today's agenda. Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Any comments or questions on it? If not, motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Jerry, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Son... Or Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
All right. PJ, you ready?
Good morning, Commissioners. PJ, kind of a director, planning department consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. Item four, construction permit review sixteen fourteen for John and Kay Duffield to review place fill on sloped area to create a level buildable area. Staff recommends to end construction permit sixteen fourteen with the applicant's concurrence. Item five, construction permit review seventeen oh one, City of Rapid City Banner Associates as the agent to review open cut and bore installation of PVC pipe for water main extension for the City of Rapid City Winton Street, north of Southside Drive, east of Redemption Road. Staff recommends to end construction permit seventeen ten. Item six, construction permit review seventeen oh two, from professional excavation to review installation of new water and sewer lines from county road, or from country road, excuse me, west end to Kyle Street, north end across existing agricultural land. Staff recommends to end construction permit seventeen oh two with the applicant's concurrence. Item seven, conditional use permit review fifteen thirty-seven, Peaceful Pines Valley Hideaway LLC, William and Valerie Landis, to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit seventeen thirty-seven with the applicant's concurrence, or per the applicant's request as well. Item eight, conditional use permit review sixteen forty-three for Stephen and Christine Gullickson to review a home occupation to allow for an internet firearm sale and distribution business on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit sixteen forty-three with fourteen conditions. Item nine, construction permit seventeen fifteen, City of Rapid City Banner Associates as the agent to install six-inch, eight-inch, and twelve-inch water main to provide Rapid City potable water to Mesa View subdivision in Morris Lane. Staff recommends approval of the construction permit seventeen fifteen with nine conditions. Item ten, construction permit seventeen sixteen, Site Work Specialists Incorporated to develop a residential lot, including grading, utility installation, and road construction on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of construction permit seventeen sixteen with eight conditions. Item eleven, ordinance amendment seventeen oh three, from Pennington County to amend section three twelve, signs, billboards, and other advertising structures of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to continue ordinance amendment seventeen oh three to the April twenty-third, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item twelve, conditional use permit seventeen forty-nine for Carol Marso to allow for two accessory structures prior to a principal structure on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit seventeen forty-nine to the February twelfth, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item thirteen, conditional use permit seventeen fifty for Benjamin Schilling to allow for a gunsmithing business on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen fifteen, seventeen fifty with fourteen conditions. Item fourteen, conditional use permit seventeen forty-eight, VACO Vacation Home Rentals, Carson Goodwin as the agent, Alvin and Sharon Gullickson as the owners, to allow vacation home rental on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit seventeen forty-eight to the February twelfth, 2018 Planning Commission meeting with four conditions.
All right. Anybody on the membership have any items they'd like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Staff?
Number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen? Is that the only one?
Yes.
Anyone in the public? Anybody would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? If so, please step forward, state your name, and let us know the item. Come up here to the microphone. And for the rest of the audience, if you don't know, you can get an agenda on the back bookshelf.
Terry Olson Lamar, advertising, number eleven.
Number eleven? Any other audience members like to pull any items off of the consent agenda? If not, that leaves our consent agenda with items four through ten, twelve, and fourteen. Did I get that correct? That means our regular agenda will be the items eleven, thirteen, fifteen through twenty-two. If that is... There's no other items on that, I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda with those items, four through ten, twelve and fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Jerry, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
All right. That carries us to item number eleven.
Item eleven is ordinance amendment seventeen oh three to amend section three twelve, signs, billboards, and other advertising structures.
All right. Sir? You had this pulled off the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Okay. Terry Olson Lamar, advertising, Rapid City, South Dakota. I realize this is not on the agenda, but I would like to add maybe some dialogue concerning going forward. Right now, the sign code in Pennington County is very restrictive, and so is Rapid City. But the City of Rapid City put a little specialization, I guess, in the sign code where if we rebuild a billboard and bring into conforming to the code, they would waive the spacing. And I would suggest adding that onto, you know, this agenda item. Now, I realize you can't rule on it, but I just like to start some dialogue. And the reason is, is that, you know, we have a lot of old, ugly wooden billboards out there that we would like to update, but the ordinance is so restrictive that we cannot, fifteen hundred feet, so, you know, we're stuck with an ugly billboard out there that we would update. Put it on steel, put it on a monopole. Let me back up a little bit. The City of Rapid City says if you bring into conforming to the code, they'll waive the spacing. What that means is put on monopole, put on steel, paint the red color, bury the power lines, and they'll waive the spacing. I think that's a win for the citizens of Pennington County, and also lets us clean them up. Some of those leases I have out there, I have a long-term, twenty years plus. Some of them I have out there forever. I have permanent easements on them. And I think this is a good step forward, that we can start some dialogue going forward. So that's basically what I had to say. I know this isn't applied to this agenda item, but I thought while the dialogue was open, we'd start some conversations and maybe get this ball rolling. I'm not apt to spend, you know, eight hundred to a thousand dollars to update a billboard and to be turned down. You know, it's not in our cards. So we would recommend doing that. Give us a provision in the code to clean these ugly billboards up. And, you know, we would. And I can't do them all in one year, naturally. But also, another deal is that the state of South Dakota won't let us clean them up either, so there's very few billboards out there that we could do this. Now, we have to conform to Pennington County code, but any state or federal highway, we have to come into conforming to the state code, which is five hundred feet. And it's got to be on commercial, industrial, or so-so far from interchange. So I'm available for questions, but I'd like to open that dialogue up, and maybe we can start some conversation and get some of these billboards updated. Thanks for your time.
Hold on. Any questions for the gentleman? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? If not, the current recommendation is to continue the ordinance to April twenty-third, 2018. Is there a motion?
Second.
Item eleven.
Move to approve or to continue?
Continue.
Okay.
Approve. That's staff recommended.
Gotcha.
I'll second that recommendation.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I do have one point I'd like to ask.
Go ahead.
If you would, PJ or someone from the staff, what is the nature of the amended language that's under discussion or under review? What is the nature of it?
Sure. This came up because of a building permit that was applied for by the Firehouse Brewing Company, a plane on a pole essentially across I-90. It does not meet our zoning ordinance. It does not meet the state's requirements. Staff denied it. Board of Commissioners approved it. So what we're looking to do is just clean up some of the language in the ordinance on page one oh three, just to make... Just to clean up so there isn't any more ambiguity. We don't believe there is any. The applicant had stated that he was taking advantage of what he believed was a loophole.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. One thing about the condition, though, I understand it's written to be continued to that date. If we can... If I could ask that it be... That the amendment or the motion be changed to be no later than that date, so we can do it earlier, if we can get the wording done.
Is that okay with you, Bill?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And Kathy, since you were the second?
Yes, fine.
All right. Gentleman wants to speak. Go ahead, sir.
I got one more comment. That airplane you're talking to is beside our billboard. That is not our deal. That's a deal that he made with the landowner. So Lamar is out of this.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah. So I just wanted to go on record and say that's not Lamar deal. And I hope you don't hold that against us, because we don't like doing things like that. And actually, we told him no. And that was a deal he made the landowner to put it up. So, you know, it's not a billboard. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Any further discussion? All right. Motion is to continue it, no later than... Right? No later than the twenty-third? And Jerry, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. That takes us to item number thirteen.
Staff pulled item thirteen, which is conditional use permit seventeen fifty, to allow for a gunsmithing business on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff pulled it just to make a change to condition number one on page, what says? Six of seven? It actually should say six of six on the bottom. The amendment... Well, the change that staff would like is to have it read that a building permit be obtained for any structure exceeding one hundred and forty-four square feet or permanently anchored. Anchored would be the addition, comma, which requires the site plan to be reviewed and approved by the planning director. And staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit seventeen fifty with fourteen conditions with the amendment to one.
Okay. Any questions for PJ? All right. Anybody in the audience like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, motion is to approve. Right? Recommends approval. Any discussion from our part? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit seventeen dash fifty with fourteen conditions with the word anchored included after the word permanently in item number one.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jerry, roll call vote, please.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
All right. Takes us to item fifteen.
Good morning. Amy Redden, Planner One. Agenda item number fifteen. This item was first heard December eighteenth, Planning Commission. The applicant's request is a minor planned unit development amendment, PU seventeen dash twelve, to amend the existing planned unit development amendment to allow a gunsmithing business on the subject property. The applicant, Jeremy Cummins, is in the audience today. The site location is six four three one Zania Street. Staff will be seeking guidance from the Planning Commission regarding this request. The existing conditions, just to highlight briefly, so we're all up to date. Planned unit development was approved originally in 2005, was amended in 2006 with ten conditions. Some of the key conditions are that there are no more than seventy-five residential lots, each with a minimum lot size of half an acre, and that there are no off-premise signs allowed in the planned unit development. This particular lot, Lot One, Block Three of Prairie subdivision, Prairie Fire subdivision, has point five seven acres, and it contains a single-family residence with an attached garage. The decks have been permitted as well, so just so we're clear with that. This was rerouted through the interdepartmental review process, which is why it was continued from the December eighteenth to allow the Sheriff's Department to comment. We did receive their comments. The Sheriff's Office does not have any objections. To reiterate as well, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, it is part of their approval process to get... To have the applicant get an approval from the local planning and zoning office. So they will not be approved unless we approve this part of the permit process. Updates from the previous Planning Commission meeting. On December eighteenth, 2017, the applicant sent an email stating that he intends on purchasing a gun safe and a Simply Safe home security system should PU seventeen dash twelve be approved. On January second, 2018, staff received comments from the Sheriff's Office stating that there were no concerns with the applicant's request. To date, the planning department has never received a request to allow gunsmithing as an on-premise occupation in a planned unit development. Currently, there are five approved conditional use permits allowing ammunition reloading, internet firearm sales, gunsmithing, stockmaking, and repair businesses within the county. All of the CUPs are located on lots one acre in size or above and are located in general agriculture, low-density residential, and suburban residential zoning districts. Additionally, four of the five approved conditional use permits are operating their businesses out of detached structures dedicated to their respective businesses. Of the five approved CUPs, there's only one gunsmithing operation of similar scope proposed by the applicant, which is located in a detached shop on four-hundred-acre lot zoned general agriculture district. Based on the density of the area, size of the lot, proposed location of the intended business, staff is seeking guidance from the Planning Commission as to how to proceed with the proposed request for the following reasons. Gunsmithing businesses have never been requested or permitted uses in planned unit developments. The Planning Commission has never previously approved this type of business on lots under one acre in size and in an area this dense in the county. Currently, the PUD has thirty-seven residential lots within the... With the potential to increase to no more than seventy-five residential lots, per the conditions of approval of the planned unit development. All but one of the permitted gun and gunsmithing businesses are done in detached shops and/or garages in a secure area completely separate from the residential spaces, which is why staff is seeking guidance from the Planning Commission with regards to how to proceed with the applicant's request. If the Planning Commission chooses to approve minor planned unit development amendment, PU seventeen dash twelve, staff recommends the following seventeen conditions to be included. So this is the area... This is subject property, and then right here is the planned unit. So this area, right in here, can be further developed to the seventy-five lots in question.
So there's nothing there than now?
There's nothing there right now. However, this is one of those lingering PUDs that we have in the county that has been... It was recently amended in 2016, which still leaves it there, a seventy-five developmental lots that can be done. This is the proposed garage, and this is the space currently that he intends on operating the business out of. And then this is what the area looks like of it now, so you get a fuller image from Rapid Map.
Go back to that previous si... Image that you had with of his garage. Is that a... What is that sign?
That's the... So that's the sign that has to go on the front of every property when they do these lovely permits?
Yep. No worries. I was just... I didn't know if it was like saying, hey, there's exploding ordinance in there.
No, 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 no.
Fair enough.
No. This is the minor planned unit development amendment sign that goes on the front of the property.
All right.
Yeah.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Kathy.
I'm assuming for a planned use development amendment like this, there's requirements to send out notices to neighbors and so on? Is that right? And that was done, obviously?
Correct.
So did you hear back from any neighbors?
We did not hear it back from anyone, no.
Negative. So no negative or positive?
No.
Either way. Any further questions for staff?
Just missing me.
Go ahead, Deb.
Sorry, Jeremy. You put in number twelve and thirteen reasonable measures. Do you have to have reasonable in there? That measures are taken to patrol, that the applicant takes measures to prevent?
So what I did and how I created this list of conditions, I compiled a list of conditions that were previously approved. That language was previously approved, we can take it out, not a problem. I just left it in there because it was what had been approved previously for the other CUPs.
I just don't know why you put reasonable, because sometimes that leaves a few loopholes in reasonable.
Correct. We can take that out.
Nope. You... This board needs to decide that. Thank you. It's aiming then, three months. That this... Number seventeen, sorry. That this minor planned unit development be reviewed in three months or on complaint basis. Aren't most of them on complaint basis?
They do say within one year typically, or on complaint basis as well. Yes. That language is there.
So I think one year would be reasonable on his as well. That's my opinion.
Is there a reason why y'all chose three months?
Just to verify that everything was installed, we did... I think I did put it on as condition fifteen, that no business operations shall commence until staff has received proof that the safe and security features of the... Are on... Have been purchased or put on the property. That was just kind of to verify that those were there, which is why staff put three months.
So Chairman, so he would verify in three months that he did all the conditions, then it'd be one year? Or how does it work after that? Or is it every three months again?
No, it's not every three months. We could do it one year or two years.
Okay.
Because typically, it'll go one year, just to make sure that the conditional use permit has been... The uses have been conducted on the property to establish the use. Then it'll go to two years, then three years, then five years, and then so on and so forth.
Okay. Now I see why you did the three months. Okay.
Gotcha. Go ahead, Kathy.
One of the point, Amy, it strikes me that an important condition is that this business is restricted to the, you know, the applicant, bringing projects in and out, rather than having customers coming in and out.
Correct.
And I don't... Is that in these conditions? I didn't see that anywhere. Maybe I'm missing it. But it's... I mean, and that's the intent of the project for the applicant, from what I can read. But I'm wondering if that shouldn't be incorporated into the conditions.
Three... Conditions three and five, or three and six kind of speak to that. Service business shall be operated completely within the existing detached garage is condition number three. And then number six speaks to it being entirely indoors. So it doesn't necessarily speak to not having... Not bringing in customers. Is that what you were...
That's right. Just so that the, you know, the commotion and so on of customers coming and going and so on, that's not... That's not part of this.
That's okay. I was gonna say, I'm not seeing anything specifically.
What we have done in the past, when there's been concerns about that with other home businesses, they've put operating hours, and that people could come and go only during those operating hours. It varied by the landowner and the need. Some were weekends, some early mornings, some were... I mean, it just varied. But that's one way that we were able to condition that.
So you... It's not common practice to specify that these aren't, you know, customer-based deliveries and pickups, that they're...
Yeah.
It's...
In the previous... So this is kind of... There's quite a few gunsmithing or gun-type businesses on this, which is where there's a trend today. If you look previously on agenda item number eight, condition twelve, that the hours of operation continue to be conducted between the hours of seven AM and six PM. So it is just hours. On the other gunsmithing operation, the other... The only other permit, they did have business hours. They are open, I think, six days a week, with Sunday being closed. But that's typically how it's been done. And that's more of a shop.
Right. This strikes me that this is a different type of business model. And, I mean, I don't see why that shouldn't be reflected in these conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich. Is it covered under number five, where it says that no on-premise, no on-premise retail sales will be allowed? Shall be allowed?
Right, that actually might be the one, I mean, that, that may cover it. What does that typically refer to?
That's number five, item, condition number five.
Yeah, number five. I mean, it means he can't sell there, he's just bringing it back.
Fixing it and then taking, yeah.
Fixing and taking it away.
His retail is the, you know, fixing of the, of the guns, so it seems to me that, that it's covered there. The intent is not to have it, but maybe that number five just needs further definition.
Yeah, so, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Kathy.
So, to the staff here, is that, does number five, do you interpret number five as getting to the, the crux of the issue in terms of having customers come in and out?
I believe so, guys.
Okay, so really five is the one that addresses that? Is that right? The customer base?
Yes, now, did you want hours of operation?
Well, to me, hours of operation aren't exactly needed, because it's not gonna be a-
Come and go. No, I get that, but I know we talked about it, and I just did, just checking.
Uh-huh.
So, these things come up years later, so.
Yeah.
All right, Bill, go ahead.
One of the problems I see with the hours of operation, from, from reading his, his intent, he's probably gonna do a lot of this stuff in the evenings after his other job.
Yep.
So, by adding hours of operation, I think that would limit when he could do his work.
I'm, I'm satisfied if number five is interpreted to be a restriction on customers coming and going, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, honey.
I'd just like to point out that in Mr. Cummings' executive summary attached, and under customers, he has said, "I will not be selling out of my garage or having customers coming to my garage." So, that might be used as a reference to how to maybe add to number five if necessary.
I'm not even sure if it needs to be added there, because it's addressed that there will be no-
Retail sales. Retail sales is different than having people come and go, they could just be coming to pick something up. Does that count as retail?
They paid for it. That's also, his comments are restrictive to his garage only, doesn't mention his residence.
The applicant's here.
The applicant is here in Washington.
He might be able to clarify some of our questions here. So, if y'all don't mind, can, can the applicant come forward? Good morning, go ahead, state your name for us.
Jeremy Cummings, Rapid City. Yeah, it's not my intent or desire to have people coming and going, I, my model is to pick up at re- at retail locations, and then take them back to my place, and then deliver them back to the retail location, so. Yeah, I don't intend, I don't want people coming and going at my house, you know, I just want, in, in my, you know, I project to do maybe 10 a month, you know, it's not gonna be a big operation, but I wanted to do everything, you know, separate the hobby and do it correctly.
Any further questions for Jeremy? Good, all right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have one thing I'd like to ask you.
Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
So, it's my understanding that when you amend a PUD like this, these conditions apply to the entire PUD, not just to the one lot of this applicant? Or is this, does this apply just to that one lot of that applicant?
This, this applies to just that one lot. A major PUD amendment would allow this in every lot.
I see, okay.
So, but, so these are additional conditions on the PUD in addition to the existing 0516.
And these conditions just apply to the one lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There is a recommendation possibly, if you'd like to consider it for condition number five, if we're looking for, to make it as clear as possible, that no on-premise retail sales be allowed, and customers be restricted from pickup and drop off at the subject property only.
Seems reasonable.
Okay, any further questions? All right, seeing none, they're looking for a recommendation from us, there's been a couple of things pointed out, some changes on here. Anybody have any idea where they would like to go with this? Approval, nonapproval, approval with the conditions? Any edits on the conditions?
Um, Chair, just 1213, I think we should take out reasonable. I think it's pretty much you follow the rules or you don't, and there's gotta be guidelines already set up. So, if they just meet the, that the measure, measures are taken to control, the orders on 12, and that the applicant takes measures to prevent, I mean, those pretty much say that anyway.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, get this started. Make a motion to approve minor planned unit development PU 17-12 with the 17 conditions that staff has, has proposed, including the changes to item number five stated by PJ, removing the word reasonable in number 12, and removing the word reasonable in number 13. And then on item number 17, be reviewed in one year, or on a complaint basis to verify all the conditions of the approval are being met. In my mind, he's not allowed to start, I guess, anyway, that's my motion, I got a few comments.
Fair enough, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'm the second.
Second by Bill, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
It seems to me that item number 15 requires him to submit proof of that to staff before he can start anyway, so I don't see the, the reason for the, the three months there.
Fair enough.
That's why the reason for the change.
Any further discussion? Concerns or comments? All right, Jerry call the roll.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Motion carries, that moves us to item number 16.
Item 16 is layout plat 1749, which is to create lots one through 10 of Broom Graff subdivision. The applicant is Eric and Heidi Hendrickson, the surveyor is Spurley Consulting, and one of the, survey representative is in the audience today. The entire subject property currently is just over 264 acres, however, for this plan year, for this layout plat, we're only looking at about a little bit over 180. This is a subject property as it exists today. There is special flood hazard area on the property, they're outlined in blue, that touches some of the residence current structures on the property. It is currently zoned general agriculture with future land use, also of general agriculture with a little bit more of the yellow, which is low-density residential to the northwest and to the east. Again, out of the 264-plus acres, the applicant is requesting to create lots one through 10, and leave just over 39 acres unplanted of Broom Graff subdivision. The remaining acres of this subdivision will also remain unplanted and will not be part of Broom Graff subdivision as proposed. As it exists today, there are several structures on the subject property, let's see if I can get a good picture of it, that's, that's the best one we're gonna have, which have been in, on the property for well over 100 years, some of them, some 50 years, some just a few years ago. There's a lot of structures that have come and gone over the years, it was something that staff had been working with the applicant to try and clean up some of the issues on the property for the last six or seven years prior to me, even coming to the county. With that, staff will be looking to do a recommendation, or adding a recommendation to have a meeting, an onsite meeting with the landowner, so we can kind of work through exactly where the structures were, what is on the property, what's not accounted for on the property, just so as we move forward through this three-step process, that it's a cleaner process, and we have a better understanding of exactly what's going on on the subject property. The proposed lots, let's see it right here, blow up of that on the left, and then kind of one of the screenshots of a smaller note on the right. Proposed lots one through three are currently vacant of any structures. In addition, lot eight, nine, 10, and the unplanted 39-plus acres are also vacant of any structures. Currently, proposed lot four, proposed lot five, six, and seven all have existing structures on those, ranging from barns, houses, sheds, things like that. Like I said, staff had been working with this applicant due to known violations for several years. The applicant is looking to sell the property, staff has actually met with the proposed buyer, unless it's changed hands, to kind of go through what some of the concerns are. And from right now, from what we can tell, the proposed plat will help correct the known violations on the property. Having multiple residences, right now there's four on one property. And right now, as proposed, it's looking to create separate lots for each one of those, which will bring it into compliance. But we just wanna have one more meeting, while we haven't met with the landowner yet, only the proposed buyer, as we knew it back about a month or so ago, just to make sure everything is clean as it goes forward. This was ratified through the interapartmental review, register D just had a comment, just needed a change to the title at the top of the proposed plat, regional airport, because this does exist inside FAA-regulated area. There's just some minor stuff with Form 7460, which is Part 77 for FAA regulations, which is something we can do in-house with the applicant. It's not as cumbersome as it sounds, it's pretty much just an acknowledgement by the landowner that there are some FAA concerns in the area. Let's see, where else? The West River Electric would like to see a 25-foot-wide platted easement in the interior of all lot lines to accommodate the subdivision for overhead power line construction. If not, and if there is only an eight-foot easement, then West River Electric will be required to go underground to put those lines in, they just wanted to make the landowner and the applicants aware of that. Also, 911 commented, that says, "Looks like the physical address can or will be issued off Antelope Creek," and they didn't see any need to name any driveways or new roadways at this time. The environmental planning wanted to make known that there is special flood hazard area on the subject property. Again, on the plat that you're looking at, that kind of gray hashed area is Zone A. Per, it was a 44 CFR 60.3B states that if you're doing, if you're planning over 50 lots or over five acres total, you are required to find the base flood elevation for those lots, that will, that is also a requirement that is listed as a condition of approval of the layout plat. That is also a requirement staff has to do, because the county isn't, has a flood damage prevention ordinance, part of the National Flood Insurance Program that the county is involved in. The addressing coordinator commented that it appears that proposed lot lines will place each residence on its own lot, and that all, all addresses be posted in accordance with, with Pennington County Ordinance 20. The county highway department counted, commented that the site plan does not show any proposed roads or access easements, which in their absence creates landlocked parcels, and road maintenance responsibilities need to be addressed. I did include the agent's comments in there, that they are looking to show proposed easements on future plats. They were looking to do it around the final plat time, which is an administrative procedure. Staff will be recommending that it be done when the preliminary plat is reviewed, so that the planning commission and the board of commissioners can review that proposed easement. They also said, stated that approach permits will be required for access onto Antelope Creek, and that drainage to Rapid Creek must not be impacted. To conclude, the existing subject property contains four separate known residences, and the landowner's submittal of plat, of layout plat 1749 will create separate lots for each of those known residences. The landowner's proposal to create Broom Graff subdivision will increase density in the area, and the opportunity for additional residence units can be added on the larger acres to the, to the west. This would not be a dead-end road system, as Antelope Creek swoops down out to the south and over to the west, so that our subdivision regulations, when we get to them for the 40 acre minimum, would not apply at this point. Nine of the 11 proposed properties for PL 1749 will be smaller than a required 40 acres for general agriculture, so the applicant will also be looking at the need for rezoning to an appropriate zoning district, or to require lot size variances for the parcels. And additional comments from the, from the Pennington County Fire Administrator may, may be coming, they are not included in, in this, they had some, he had some computer trouble for last week's, plus he's been busy on calls, so they may come in, and we also may have to address those in, during the preliminary plat process, but also can address those with the agent and the landowner when we do visit them onsite, because he usually has a lot of questions. But with the concerns, any of the above-mentioned concerns does not affect staff recommendations to approve layout plat 1749, as a layout plat is an informal proposal by landowners, applicants, and staff performs a preliminary review for general scope and conditions. So, this applicant, because of the 10 lots, will need to go through the three-step planning process as mentioned, so it'll be the layout plat, preliminary plat, and the final plat. And with that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat 1749 with 19 conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Kathy.
I'd like to just get a little more information about the floodplain development permit that's referred to in condition 11. What, what additional, what additional requirements are there in the, these permits to build in that, you know, that, that area, that special flood area versus just a normal building permit?
Well, it depends on what it's zoned. Right now, it's a Zone A, which is the least restrictive floodplain that FEMA has. And again, all these requirements are because of the county's involvement in the National Flood Insurance Program, so landowners with federally backed mortgages can get flood insurance in case something happens. With a base flood elevation needing to be determined on this, the zone on this will change from an A to an AE, E standing for elevation. Essentially, depending on where they need to go, they need to show what the elevate, base flood elevation is, and, and with our current ordinance, that they build at or above the known base flood elevation, and then staff is also requiring as built, so if somebody says, "We're gonna build it two feet above the base flood elevation," we need to make sure that it's leased at or above, so that they do what they say they're gonna do on paper.
Right.
Because things, you know, when you get so many different people involved, it can be difference in height, so. It's, right now, it's a $75 permit through the, through our office, and we have three certified floodplain managers in our office, and we review them, and if there's any concerns, we handle that with the applicant, well, the landowner, and then we move forward from there. If you're doing any construction in those zones, flood, in any known zone, a floodplain development permit is required.
Okay, how about subject systems in a floodplain, in this flood area? Is there any differences like for that one?
It can be state.
Be, no.
With the floodplain.
Okay, thank you.
Brittany Molitor, environmental planning supervisor. Typically, in the floodplain, we defer to the state, the state likes to see them obviously outside of the floodplain, but if they are located within the floodplain, typically they are approved for a mound system, something that's above the elevation, and they like to see the actual discharge pipe of the mound system above that base flood elevation. And then along with that, they require some kind of berming and things, so that's all taken into consideration with the floodplain permit also, so they'd have to get a floodplain permit for their onsite wastewater system in addition to their structures.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for staff? Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none?
Chairman, just one thing, sorry.
No, go ahead.
On number one, Leonard, schedule a site visit for their existing structures. Are they not in compliance, is that why? Do they have more structures, or do they not have permits, is that what that is?
Using staff records, our, our information about the property, also using equalizations information about the property, there's a disconnect between those documents and what we can see in the aerials as of May. So, we're just wanna go out there and walk through the property with the landowner, we've already been to the property and taken pictures, but we wanna get their history, because they usually know a lot more about their own property than we do.
So, you're trying to figure out if they're pre-existing structures or they have permits?
Yeah, most of them are pre-existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other further comments, questions? Current recommendation is, staff recommends approval of layout plat PL 17-49 with the following 19 conditions. Is there a motion? So, moved? Motion?
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Jerry, call the roll, please.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number 17. And for-
Can, can we take a 10-minute break, just to, I need to regroup with the computer over here and some other submittal documents that just sort of brought over to us.
Sure, I, well, let's see if the board says, so.
Okay.
I move that we recess until 10 o'clock, so that we can take care of any of the IT fixes that she needs for this next presentation. Sorry, second?
Second.
All right, Jerry, a roll call vote, please.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
All right, we return for, we'll return at 10 o'clock.
Aye.
All right, we're back in session. All right, just so everyone's aware how we're gonna roll through this today, there's been a lot of comment, a lot of information sent to us to review since our meeting on Wednesday. We're gonna probably clean up some of this from the boards, from our membership standpoint up here, and then we'll open it up to staff to get some finalizing on there, and then we'll open it back up to the audience for any further comments based on what we decide to do, or if there's any further comments that we need to consider. All right, so, with that, anybody have anything very specific that they want to address that we need to clarify? Everybody, I trust everybody got a chance to read through the new clean version after Wednesday's meeting, saw all the changes, and are there any further changes that we would like to address or clarify from our comments?
Mr. Chair, are we gonna take it section by section, or you just want comments on the entire?
Well, I, I don't mind doing it section by section, but I think if we go page by page, we're gonna slow it up again, I, I don't know. I, I'm thinking if we just hit the areas that are concerns to us, like I only have one area that's concerned to me, a big concern, I mean, there's some other comments I have, but other than that, I just kinda, if we're, if we're moving through, you know, if we, let's take it as a group, like page one through five, it looks like maybe look at a couple pages at once, does that make sense? Because I think we've kinda gone through almost line by line by now, so now it should be just some very specific adjustments. So, anything on page one through five?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sonny.
The opening paragraph of section 320, we have on here that it's regarding crushed materials that are crushed and used in construction. However, this doesn't seem to address mineral extraction mining. Maybe this has been discussed before, but I wonder if anyone could tell me if there's adequate language in here to cover mineral extraction that would include, for example, gold, silver, and so forth?
Would anybody from staff like to?
Mr. Chair, isn't that the entire intent of 507B?
It is, I, it's what I, it's what we remember, it's what I remember from our, our last meeting.
Were you looking for an exclusion statement?
No, it's that while it is in 507, that language on minerals is not in section 320.
Okay.
Do we need that in, Sonny, just a question, Chairman? This is supposed to be for just crushed pigmentite minerals, limestone, and we excluded minerals like gold and stuff, and we decided, sounds like in 507B, which we're gonna call it, what we're gonna call it, we're still gonna do 50, I thought we're gonna have another number, 321 or something like that, we're gonna, yes. So, eventually we'll have section 321, that will be for extraction of minerals. Do we, do we need to put something else in here?
That's my question.
Okay. 320.
According to public comment, it's been suggested that if this doesn't include that kind of mineral extraction, that, that would basically exclude it from everything else in 320, and I wanna know if that's true. This is pretty specific language to say crushed and used in construction, specific list of minerals, or- minerals or materials. So it seems to exclude everything outside of that.
It does, but if you go to 507B, it just says that you need a conditional use permit for the minerals and, pardon, oh, sorry. You would include the minerals under 507B, and it did say that it has to be in conformance at a minimum with section three twenty.
Okay, so as long as it's in 507B, we don't need it here in three twenty.
Correct, because it does say the conditional use permit will be, like, framed around the requirements in three twenty. But I know that there are some comment that we need to add more stuff in the future for minerals, but at this time, this is what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
I have something for 507B if we're going there. So it says in one of the comments, "To be consistent, the county might consider allowing permits to be filed under section three twenty, but reduce the term to one year and treat the permits as temporary until the new ordinance can be established." For 507B?
Oh, that way it kind of covers even the timeframe.
The types of mines. This would help to address these types of mines.
That sounds like it would be a good catch-all, if you will, so that there's no question that this is going to be set for a future review. You thought?
I do have a thought.
Okay. Let her ask a question to PJ real quick. Deb, do you have a question for PJ?
Yes. Did you read that comment that was sent to us on that?
Several. I kind of remember that one. My concern would be, we don't want to put anything in an ordinance that says, "Well, we'll update it later." I mean, I'm sure there's another way to wordsmith it. And then it would just have to be an action by the board. If they are looking to have an ordinance updated, we could do that for you. The other thing is to define what temporary would be in instance of a mining operation.
Say that again.
Define temporary as it pertains to a mining operation. I know just because defining temporary has come up several times and will come up again shortly, but it's more for structures and uses that are not in this type of operation. So I know things are specific and different when it comes to mining, so we would just ask for a definition of temporary.
But if you reduce the term to one year and treat the permits as temporary, temporary would mean one year, right? Until the new ordinance can be established? No?
Not unless you put it in there. Maybe it should be reviewed every one year at this point in time.
I think if someone, like any business, is doing with no uncompliance, stuff going on in their business, I think one year is pretty tough to run a business on. I'll just say that. Because you've got hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in this, and then all of a sudden, you know, you're shut down in a year with no uncompliance issues. So in this case, I don't know. That's why I guess I asked the question. We did define mineral, by the way.
Right.
So.
What about three years, then?
This is a whole different ballgame than what we're talking about. This is gold mining and uranium. What we were talking about is, I guess I was more talking about the crushing rocks and stuff like that, so.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got a page too. I followed Sunny.
All right. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment on page five. It's the section F, Appeal of Planning Commission Decision. You know, last time, there was a fair amount of discussion on the word aggrieved versus another option, affected, and so on, and then there was some discussion about just eliminating both of those words and just be more descriptive. And so I've got some suggestion as to how to perhaps change this, and my recommendation would to eliminate, would be to eliminate the word aggrieved because of the legal implications. And it's my premise that when we are providing an opportunity for a resident to appeal it, our decision to the Board of Commissioners, that's not a legal, that's not a legal system. It's just our process and our procedure. So to get rid of the word aggrieved and then recommend language such as, "The applicant, any person owning real estate within five hundred feet of the permit limit or any person likely to be financially harmed or physically injured by a decision of the Planning Commission on an application for a mining permit may appeal to the county board." So provide some description rather than a term that's going to be then interpreted and debated.
Right. I'm in favor of that. Any?
Just a question, why five hundred feet?
Well, because that's the distance that we've been used for other things. I mean, to me, it seems like in a way it should be greater than that, but that is the distance that's being defined for having to send out notices and for a few other things, I believe, in here. So it's just a consistency, but I mean, in one way, it would be, would lower the bar if the distance were increased. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have a problem with that? And is that, Jerry, do we want to put that in there? Do we want to adjust the language?
My bottom line here is a solution. So the mining company can't just come and sue the county for any reason whatsoever and that the citizens can't sue the county for no reason whatsoever. So that's my bottom line, is we're protecting the county here as well as the citizens and the mining companies. So I just want to make sure if we put affected or aggrieved, that we are protecting the county first. So based on that ordinance, is that, do you believe, Ms. Kathy, that that's what it's doing?
Well, I don't pretend to know the legal implications of these things. I just, I mean, my point was to make it more doable for an affected person to appeal, and I don't know if that, I mean, I don't know if that has implications in who can sue who. I really don't know.
Michelle, would you like to, you look like you were moving to come up here and at least give us some input. Would you like to, please?
If you would like.
Please.
I'm anticipating.
And then after you give us input, I'll tell you something that I was thinking about. I think I remember it in a comment, unless you'd like to hear it first, but it deals with the same thing. But wording this in a way that at the planning and zoning level, that anybody in the county could appeal it, and then it would have to be an aggrieved individual, the legal term aggrieved, for anyone appealing it at the Board of Commissioners level. It does give you the opportunity to appeal it on the lower level with anyone and then moving into the Board of Commissioners if someone's aggrieved. I don't know. That was just one of the comments that was in there that I remember reading or something similar.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. What we're talking about is standing. It's just a legal concept. I did send out a memo hopefully further explaining the meaning of standing. The bottom line is, is that generally, the aggrieved standard is the standard that is applied when you appeal from the Board of Commissioners to the circuit court. Aggrieved is the standard that's used when you're talking about a judicial appeal. What we're dealing with are appeals between administrative bodies. So whether you use aggrieved or affected, it really comes down to how you want to define it, and I have no issue with Commissioner Johnson's proposal in terms of making it very clear as to who has standing to move forward on administrative appeal. I took a closer look at this over the weekend, and I think the judicial standing is separate from what we're dealing with here. Is that clear?
Yes, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Any further questions?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Administrative and legislative, when does that come into play?
Administrative, legislative.
Or legislative? Meaning someone had put administrative, not legislative.
Referendum. That's dealing with a separate issue on referendum?
Okay.
Not standing?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
There was a request at the meeting last week where we would take the dimension stone and the decorative stone out of 507B and put it into section two on two. And I've been thinking about that, and it seems to me like the gold, silver, uranium, precious metals, coal, bentonite, all of those things are different than dimension stone and decorative stone, and those seem like they're more applicable to the rock, sand, gravel-type mining. And my question, so I guess at this point, I'd recommend that those get moved and included in section two twelve.
Decorative and what else, sir?
Dimension stone and decorative stone.
Is it because it's mined the same way, Rich?
Yeah, and it's not the same, there's no processing of it. He's basically taking it out, selling it. That's my understanding, and so there's.
Good point. Mr. Chairman, I agree with that suggestion. That's the right thing to do as far as I'm concerned.
Um, Rich, I forgot about that.
So that would be, yeah, so rock, sand, gravel, and then I would say dimension stone, comma, decorative stone, comma, or earth excavation.
Can you define dimension stone? What is dimension stone?
I guess I would request, I would request the gentleman who talked about this last week to do the specific dimension on that.
James.
The specific explanation.
I don't think I see him here.
He's right there. Yep, he's hiding behind.
Come on up, James, and give us some input on this.
I'll give the specific definition of that.
Jim Dean, Coles Stone, Hill City. I appreciate the Commissioner's thinking on this. Mineral, and, you know, mining for minerals is a huge thing that's different than what we do. You know, you're mining out big, big amounts of material for a very, very minute, a little bit of gold, and you end up with.
James, we're just asking what dimension stone is, sir.
Yeah. Dimensional stone.
Yes, sir.
Dimensional stone is actually harvested, you know, in big blocks and then used for cutting out, you know, certain size material.
Granite countertops and stuff.
Yeah. The only dimensional stone operation in South Dakota that I know of is in Millbank, South Dakota.
So it's done, Chairman, it's done the same way as you're doing gravel, sand, or rock. You're digging it out, and you're using anything that has to do with, like, the gold mining, uranium, or anything?
No.
The chemicals and all the stuff to do that?
Yeah, no chemical or anything. And what we do, if you do include us in the sand and gravel, which we prefer, is we just go in, we remove stone, that's usable stone, we process it into different things that we use it for, and then we reclaim as we go. We don't have any chemical processes.
Okay.
We don't make great, big, huge stockpiles of material that's, you know, has chemical in it or anything like that. It's just real small scale. So if we could be included in the sand and gravel, that would be a big help to us financially as well as our whole operation. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any further questions about dimension stone, decorative stone being moved out of 507 and into our current one? All right. Thanks, Rich. Any other items on pages one through five of eighteen?
We still have a lot on A1, General Ag.
I have a.
Go ahead, Rich. We go first.
I asked PJ about this, and the word "and" and the comprehensive plan was added to item number two under E on page five of eighteen. And my only concern with that is that we don't know what that comprehensive plan says at this point. It's being rewritten. Further, it's my understanding that once it is written, a lot of these ordinances are going to have to be, let's say, tweaked, modified, those types of things. And so my thought would be to make that happen when that's ready. At this point, I don't see the need to tie these two together. We're trying to get through this, and then comprehensive plan, when that's done, then the tweaks can be made between the two documents so they're consistent with each other. But for now, I would propose to remove that out of section two.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Isn't there a comprehensive plan currently in place?
Yes.
And so, like, at the present moment, then this would need to conform, excuse me, be consistent with the comprehensive plan that we have in place, and then that would change.
The existing comprehensive plan, and I don't have it in front of me, the language, I don't believe, is really, I don't know, there's not a lot there in the form of the mining items. And PJ, if you could come forward and read what the current comprehensive plan states.
Five oh seven A and B.
This should be short. No, there's not much. There's some small sections on mining, one in particular on page three says, "Pennington County continues to deal with," I think this is what we read to you on the phone, "Pennington County continues to deal with private lands that were once established mines and had the potential to be mined. The location and size of these mining surveys have posed a particular set of elements to consider when reviewing planning and development projects. Many of the mining claims have legal access and floodplain issues." There's not much more than that. But anything that we do has to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, whether existing or what we're going to do in the future. And the future one, Commissioner Marsh, the consultants are looking to do their presentation in June, and it could be a year, year and a half, two years after that before it's adopted.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
PJ, it was my understanding that the reason that you suggested this, adding the comprehensive plan, was to ensure consistency with the future land uses that are contained within the comprehensive plan. Is that?
Correct. The comprehensive plan talks about future land uses, but goes into a lot more detail generally. It's just for consistency purposes.
Yeah, okay.
So what is our thoughts? Keep it or strike it?
It just doesn't sound like there's much in the comprehensive plan in the way that it really even ties or does anything with this document. And then my thought is that once that's written, then you take these two and combine them together. But including items and not knowing how it's written, I guess, my main concern was voting on something not knowing what it's going to say, or having them tied together and not knowing what part B is going to say or part A.
Chairman, this ordinance will be in the new comprehensive plan book. Am I correct when this is done?
There'll be a portion of.
So we're doing this for the future of this ordinance.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it'll be part of the mining ordinance. The comprehensive plan is a directional guiding document, so that, adding that wording says that we're going to look back and be consistent with the current one and then also with what the future one will state. And it could change. There could be a lot of, there will be a lot of things that change with the future comprehensive plan.
So what I'm saying is, are you taking, once we get three twenty done, you'd be taking it out? Basically, we'd be relying on this for the future, and the old ordinance that's in there will be struck? Or are we leaving both in there until the new one's done? You'd have to take one out to be able to add the other.
So just for the commission, the comprehensive plan doesn't contain ordinances. The ordinances are built off of the guiding language in the comprehensive plan. So this current ordinance should meet what is in the current comprehensive plan. When the comprehensive plan changes, like Commissioner Marsh had said, all of our zoning ordinances are going to be tweaked or changed or rewritten.
The difference is, this is an ordinance. This will be the ordinance when we follow the ordinance, and the comprehensive plan is different.
Is a bigger guiding document.
That's basically land use. Am I correct?
Current, yeah, future land use and the reasons why.
So this ordinance will go through, and comprehensive plan will be the same until the new one comes, which is basically future land use?
The path forward, as I understand it, would be, we should be working off of this
ordinance until such time as the comprehensive plan is rewritten, because the existing comprehensive plan doesn't really address this section three twenty. And so we would move forward with three twenty until the comprehensive plan is rewritten. Once comprehensive plan is rewritten, we then come back and address, to make it consistent with the ordinances, one at a time or several at a time, in order to have the comprehensive plan and the ordinances be consistent.
I guess I'm confused, because there's an ordinance and then there's a comprehensive plan. So the ordinances are in a book, and then the comprehensive plan is a whole different model.
Yeah. Yeah, the ordinances would be the rules.
Yes, this would be the rules of mining.
The plan is a, is a plan. It's a guide.
Yes.
So to say, moving forward.
That's what I'm saying, and maybe I'm confused, but the guide is already there. We already know future land use in the areas, and the ordinance applied to the comprehensive plan in those future land use would be used by this ordinance. Am I confused?
The comp plan also goes into a lot more than that. It goes into, like, soil resources, floodplain, water resources, topography, wildlife, wildfire, transportation routes, economics. I mean, comprehensive plan is comprehensive in nature, so.
Maybe this would be the better way to clarify it. How would it affect the ordinance? So what, just, it doesn't have to be what we've talked about at all, dealing with the current.
Sure.
Comprehensive plan moving forward. How would the future comprehensive plan potentially affect this if we left that language in there? How would that affect? Maybe that would give a better picture.
If there are any changes in the, what is currently the future land use, as opposed to what could be the future land use, and then approved by the board or brought forward by citizens for consideration, it's hard to tell, because there's so many parts to it. One thing could change, 100 things could change.
So let me just throw an example out there. If the comp plan says we're only going to have mining districts, then, and you can't do mining and ag, that's where it would change, where we'd have to move all the mining stuff into a mining district.
If we create a mining district.
If there was a creative mining district.
Correct.
Does that make sense of how it would fit in the new one? It wouldn't change the ordinance itself, it would just change where it sits and seeds, and then how the county moves forward in the future, if I understand correctly.
There is always a possibility the ordinance will change because of that, not just the district designation.
Correct. I mean, there's other things that could, setbacks, all kinds of other stuff.
But it's not just for this, it's for any of the uses in the county.
Right. Does that help? Are you still concerned?
I heard exactly what I, what I, what I think to be the issue. We don't, we don't know exactly what it's going to say. The assumption is, is that when it's there, we're going to have to come back and approve them all, and re- re-approve these anyway, with the changes to make them consistent with one another.
So there's no sense in leaving the word comp plan in there?
That's, that's where I'm at.
I don't have a problem removing it.
PJ, I thought you added it.
I did. Yep.
Okay.
Just to add, just like we were doing on the previous items in the agenda, you know, to make it clear, you know, all the ordinances that we have should build off of the comprehensive plan innately. So we're just adding it in there to be clear.
So you're saying, if we take this out, you'll build it on our ordinance, right?
We will, anyway, but just don't, yeah, there is a current comprehensive plan to always consider.
How about, how about this for consideration, then? The whole purpose of this is to, is to, of the ordinances is defined in, in Section 320B purpose, right? But this and comprehensive plan is in, is in public hearing. And so in my mind, should the comprehensive plan be more in the purpose? Because that's what it's, that's what it's intended, intending to do?
For the whole ordinance.
Supposed to be consistent with one another?
PJ, would it be better to move it there into the purpose, and just remove it from that one small section, so it doesn't look like it's only applying to that one section?
Yeah, I would not object to that.
Under authority. They do have under authority to, the board may adopt a zoning ordinance to regulate. So the ordinance is under authority, and purpose would be under comprehensive plan? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I'm suggesting moving comprehensive plan to be purpose. Purpose of the mine, of the ordinance.
That's not a bad idea, since you already have, law is the authority.
And so.
Chairman, I would, that is fine to me to move it there, but I would just put it at the very end. The purpose of Section 320 is to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, permit the development and utilization with neighboring land uses, prevent degradation existing private and public water supplies, minimize potential adverse environmental effects through use of best management practices, all consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That's basically what the comprehensive plan is.
Yeah.
So we can just say the word.
Is that good for you there? And then remove it?
Move it to B.
Moving. Yeah. Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other items to note?
I have, I have an item on page eight.
Let's just make sure we're finished with page one through five.
I have, excuse me, I have, Section 320A applicability. I just noticed that we have applicability based on extraction is the only word, and I'm, I've noticed that there's nothing in here about drilling, like exploratory drilling, for example. Obviously, drilling includes extraction of material, but when we're talking about 100 cubic yards, that's a lot of drilling. So that leads me to wonder if we need to, or should include something about drilling in applicability?
Board, staff, anybody got any input on that? Brittany, you're shaking your head, no.
Daniel, you have any comments on it, or Brian, on drilling on it? Or is there a different word, or did we include that?
I think my only comment on that is I'd be concerned with putting drilling in there in any way and associating a maximum number with it, just because there's a lot of projects that require drilling to do testing for geotechnical and that kind of stuff. And you might encompass those if it's a larger project, just by the sheer number or limit that you would put on it. That would be my, my concern with including drilling. There might be others out there, too.
So because it might inadvertently include non-mining operations?
Yeah, you might accidentally drag some other ones in there if you just start talking about drilling, and over any certain amount or limit throws you into this mining ordinance as well.
Okay.
That's the first thing that comes to my head as far as issues, but there may be others.
PJ, you got something for that?
Yeah, under A1 ag, in Section 205 on page 53 of our zoning ordinance, just some of the uses that are in there, you can do temporary quarries, mining, provided a construction permit is provided, and also, under permitted uses, number 16, drilling for oil or natural gases, or the extraction of sand, gravel, or minerals provided that a construction permit is obtained. So the drilling for oil and natural gases is still going to remain as a permitted use with the construction permit being required. This is the mining, this is a different section. We haven't, we wrote that section yet.
So you're saying it's covered?
It's covered.
Okay.
Thank you, PJ. Any further items to note? Page one through five of 18.
Okay, let's go back to A1 general ag, I have so many comments on.
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead, Deb.
Got a lot of comments on this. Says comments, money is permitted use because the vast majority of the county is undisturbed property with vast amount of resources. Money is permitted use, this is under general ag because the process recommendation promotes the return to the original conditions, which, that's why you do A1 general ag.
Yep.
There was some questions on the non-conforming should be grandfathered, and that was to do with, I think, more of the pre-existing, though.
And I think that that's item 9B on page 13.
Yes, that's a little further out.
Yeah, they have a.
We'll get to that one.
Yeah, they have a couple.
Specific?
We do have general ag under lot size 40 acres, so that still lets the farmers and ranchers acquire the minimum lot, 40 acres. And most of our land is in A1 general ag for mining. I keep hearing the questions on it, though, but.
What's your question?
I'll just, I'll just make, when we come to renewal and some other stuff, I think I can, I can tie it in with why we did what we did.
Right.
Okay, so, sorry.
No worries. All right, so does that get us through one through five?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
I didn't get a chance to study this, this just got left on the, on the thing here during the break, but there's a, there's a request regarding to GCC and the, and the state cement plant property that was sold by the state of South Dakota.
Michelle, can you address that?
I was going to say, have you seen it? That was my next question, is have you seen it?
Read the letter on behalf of GCC.
And I was just wondering if it would be better to be addressed on page 13, but we can address it now.
I see. If you look at the letter that I believe each of you were handed during the interim, you will see the SDCL Section 11-2-66 and 11-4-30 quoted. What I would point out is that a general rule of statutory construction is that an intent of a statute is determined from the words used in that statute, or in this case, the ordinance. When we look, and you can, you are not to go outside of those words absent ambiguity. There's no ambiguity with regard to the statute. The purpose of the statute, the intent of the statute was solely to rezone the property. It did not and does not grant any special exception to GC with regard to mining regulations. Specifically, the statute itself is titled, is titled Property Zoned as Private Business, and then it specifically states that the property held by the state of South Dakota through the Cement Plant Commission is hereby zoned to conform to its use, as if it was privately owned, and that the municipal and county governments should change their records accordingly. In reading that, I actually, in the back of my mind, was thinking, I bet you this property at the time of the sale was zoned agricultural, and that was the purpose of the rezoning. Further investigation into the legislative, legislative history confirmed my suspicions. This statute was actually part of Senate Bill 1, which was proposed in a special session in the year of 2000. It was not the own, this statute is not the only language that was added to our codified SDCL 43-2A-2 actually precluded any alien who was not a resident of the state or, or some territory of the United States, and this is still on the books, still valid law, precluded that such an entity or person from acquiring agricultural lands exceeding 160 acres. Senate Bill adopted 11-2-66, but it also adopted an exception to this particular rule concerning ownership by an alien who's not a residence. SB 1 also adopted SDCL 43-2A-8, exception for property owned by corporation for non-farming purposes, dash, cement plant commission property. That statute, which is still in the book, specifically states the restrictions of this chapter do not apply to agricultural land owned by a corporation for immediate or potential use in non-farming purposes. So essentially, what SB 1 did through the L- 11-2-66 and its other amendments was simply allowing GCC to purchase the property and own the property. And that's it. It rezoned, and it rezoned it from agricultural, we believe it rezoned it from agricultural to heavy industrial, which was its, its use at that time. So nothing in, in this ordinance or the other ordinances that were adopted as a result of SB 1 granted GCC a special exception from mining regulation. So I disagree with GCC's position that, should they be included within the mining regulations, that this would somehow conflict with state law? It does not. I'd also point out that I believe if this, if the language is proposed by GC, what GCC was adopted, an exception was granted, that we, the county, the ordinance itself would be subject to challenge within the courts, because it, it would likely violate the equal protection clause of the South Dakota State Constitution.
Any questions for Michelle? Does that clarify?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Jason Smiley wants to speak.
Jason, come on up, since we're on this specific item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My interpretation of the statute is 180 degrees different than Ms. Hoffman's, and here, here's the point. Prior to 2001, the state of South Dakota went through great efforts to be able to sell the cement plant to GCC Dakota. They had a special session, they passed special laws, they created a situation where this company would be able to continue to mine this property for its intended purpose. I provided the commission with a few pages from a land use study dating all the way back to 1979, which shows the same physical description as what's on Rapid Map today. All the way back to 1979, the state of South Dakota planned to mine this property for the purpose of creating cement. And so I read the statute to say that the intended purpose is to zone this property for its intended use, the mining of limestone. So our legal position is that now that the state of South Dakota, through its legislature, has spoken, this body is without authority to come and add additional obligations onto this particular property. This is a very narrow issue. No other operation that you're considering in terms of non-conforming uses has their own statute to be able to allow them to mine the property. And so our legal position is that when it says it is hereby zoned to conform to its use, as if it were owned, operated, and used, that's the very definition of a non-conforming use, right? Going forward, is this is what was happening at the time, right? So you're taking it as if it were owned, operated, and used by a private business on that date, and nothing has changed, except for the ownership. So just like this body would not have the ability to impose additional obligations on the state of South Dakota, it doesn't have the ability to impose additional obligations on GCC Dakota with respect to this particular property. And that's our legal position, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission on that subject.
So just so I'm clear, and just in case anyone else has the other, any other questions on it, what you're saying is you feel that if this comes into play, if this gets passed by the board of commissioners, you don't want GCC to have to meet these requirements to continue operating as they have been prior to this?
My.
I don't want to use the word grandfathering, but we know what we're talking about here.
Absolutely. And here's my expectation, is that GCC will continue to abide by whatever rules are passed by the commission, if that's what's required. It, you know, it's, it's going to apply for a permit if that's what's required. The difficulty is this, you know, the way this, and Ms. Hoffman and I have a different point of view as, as far as referendums are concerned as well. But here's, here's the issue, is if somehow this body or the county commission should for some reason deny a permit to mine that property, or if for some reason citizens in the area decide that they should not want the cement plant to mine that property, now we've got a real crisis on our hands. You know, they just spent $80 million. The governor came out for the opening of their new facility. You know, it was in the media everywhere. And they invested that money with the absolute intent of mining the property that we're talking about. And so the possibility that that wouldn't happen for some reason is a real crisis that's being created for this company.
So Jason, why would it be any different than any other company that spent that much money doing their mining? I guess would be the question, because...
Yeah, maybe that's a clearer.
You went through the state, and the state statute says this, and they made special rules for this company, and exempted any rules or regulations from county or city government, is what you're saying?
With respect to the particular property that was sold to GCC, they passed this statute, these two statutes, specifically for the purpose of permitting this company to mine the property. Why would they ever buy it if they hadn't believed fully at the time that they spent, I think it was like $300 million, buying this property from the state of South Dakota? Why would they have bought this property if their ability to mine this property, and everybody knows that this doesn't happen overnight. It takes years and years and years to mine all of this property. So the answer to your question, Commissioner, is that this is the only company we're talking about that had special legislation passed so that it could mine the property.
I guess I didn't read the legislation, but I'll keep asking. Why would it be different than any other company that spent millions of dollars for theirs and then tell them that they are exempt from the rules because their company costs $300 million? I understand that's what you're saying for the business and how much that would, that impacts us, but why is that any different than Pete Lean or any other bigger company in town that's been mining? And why did they do this and exempt the other companies from it?
And I understand the point you're making, and it's not a question of the equity of the situation necessarily. The question is, in terms of an explanation for our interpretation of what the statute says, is that they were spending $300 million to buy property that they believed that they could mine, and that's the reason that the statute says what it says, and that's the reason that it was zoned to conform to its use as if it were owned, operated, and used by a private business on that day. So that's the answer, in my opinion.
Can I ask a simple question?
Sure.
And maybe it's, maybe I'm looking at this in a different manner. I worked in the medical field for 22 years. We have standards. Over the years, they change. Have not standards and things changed in the mining industry, specifically your business there, GCC, that y'all have had to conform to? Does that make sense? Is that clear? Over the years, since y'all have had that piece of property, things have changed that y'all have had to conform to. Is that correct?
Certainly, there would be state and federal legislation that applied, to answer your question, that would apply to the mining industry as a whole at times.
So if the state and the feds can change it, then the county can change to make it safer for the residents, the citizens?
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Without being crazy changing?
But it's a supremacy clause thing, you see. It flows one way and not the other way. So certainly, the federal government, in certain respects, can impose obligations. And likewise, state government, so long as it didn't conflict with federal law. But here, what we have is a county government that appears to be enacting additional obligations when the state of South Dakota has already spoken on that issue and said, "You can mine this property."
But isn't that your same supremacy laws, that you should be exempt from everybody else in the state? I guess legally, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I guess that's a question for Michelle, not us. And if we can, I think we should treat you like any other mining company, GCC. That's my bottom line, for me.
Thank you, PJ.
Do you have anything else?
I don't. I appreciate your time.
And I am listening to you, Jason.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. All right. Any further questions on 1 through 5 before we move to 6 through 10? Okay, page of 6 through 8, 6 through 10 of 18. Any comments?
I have page 8.
Okay. Anybody got anything before page 8? If not, then we'll go to Kathy. Go ahead.
Okay, my question is on paragraph 4 regarding the bonding. Now, I've got two questions. One is a detail, but I do think that in rereading the site plan requirements and the operations plan requirement, the reclamation or other work proposed in the applicant's, it's better to say operations plan than site plan, because then the operations plan is where it talks about the requirements to stabilize different materials, and now the reclamation plan is in the operations plan. So I would recommend changing the word "site" in the last line to "operation." Or to be, I mean, if you wanted to have them both in there, it's fine.
Oh, yeah, so it's consistent with their, I see what you're saying.
That's my first recommendation. Secondly, I just want to understand this a little bit. And this has nothing to do with, I mean, I have no suggestions really how to edit this, but the planning director may, at his or her discretion, require an applicant, any applicant for a mining permit, to post a performance bond. So this, I'm trying to get an understanding of how this would happen. So this isn't, wouldn't be a condition of the permit that would come before us? It wouldn't be a condition, because that, so this is something that's required outside of a condition? Because how do you envision this working? Explain to me how this whole process would be.
Thank you, PJ.
No, that would be part of the condition. It would be a condition. And it's not, and it says "may," so it's not all the time.
So, and I appreciate that. But so I thought that those conditions were, you know, the staff recommends approval with these conditions. And so how can that be a requirement?
Just like today with the gunsmithing one that you guys looked at, we were asking for certain things to be done prior to operation beginning.
Right. But it's a recommend, so in other words, you may, that may be your recommendation to this board to require that, but it's really a recommendation to the planning commission?
As a condition, yeah. We could require it prior to application, but a lot of things can happen after an applicant applies for something, and then it gets heard in a public hearing. A lot of things can change.
Right. But I'm just, what I'm trying to understand is, what's the role, if any, of the planning commission on this bond, performance, this performance bond?
Well, if it's put in as a condition, then the planning commission can address it. It's also in as, if it does get approved, this will be in the ordinance, so the planning commission can pull it out of the ordinance and ask why or why not a performance bond was done, and also then question an amount.
I guess, okay, so thank you for that. So it seems to me this needs to be a little bit clearer then, that the planning director may, at his or her discretion, recommend to, as a condition of the permit application, of the recommendation as a condition of the permit, require an applicant to do this bond. Because it doesn't, to me, it doesn't explain how this really works in practice.
So if we look under surety, did you get the paper on surety instead of putting performance bond?
I did, and I appreciate that. And I think that's a, my, seems like that's a little separate issue, but this was just to explain, to be real clear on how the process works. And so it would, I would appreciate, you know, have a little more articulation of how this works. Because this, so you're saying this would be just like a condition of the recommended application?
Yeah, they can...
Yeah, and I think it should say that.
Basically, can do improvements in surety, is what it's called, for any control measure, stabilization, reclamation. Am I correct, PJ?
Sorry.
You should not have gone.
Thought I got out of that one.
And then under, we should define surety and what that means as well, so people know if we are going to have them do a surety. Improvements in surety, do you call it surety or surety bond? Surety from the city is, a lot of times, they make people do it on roads. Construction projects, stuff like that. Am I correct? And they seem to work pretty well, and they're usually for two years, if I'm correct as well. My, yeah.
Think you had Tom Houghton back there, yeah?
So I guess my thought is very similar to the concern I brought up about the groundwater monitoring, about the role of the planning commission there. And so here's what it says, that based on site-specific conditions, the, no, this is a little different, excuse me, I'm sorry. But it's got the same idea, that it's as a condition of the approval of the mining permit. And that's the words I'd like to see in 4, is that it's, as a condition of the mining permit application. That's not quite right. I know I said that, but as a condition of approval of the mining, for the mining permit.
Does that make sense?
It was clear to us as written, but I understand. I mean, we're all about clarity, and we read them every day. Not everybody else does, so if it needs to be reworded for clarity for the public purposes, that's fine.
As a condition of approval of the permit, that's recommend.
It has to do with, it's under operations plan.
As a condition, yeah, there you, I think that's right.
It's under operations plan, and then one of the operation plan, number four, is the planning director may have discretion, basically, to have them post a surety bond. Right. That doesn't mean you have to do that. It means they may, in case there's some other interest behind the scenes that, you know, they haven't followed through before on something, or, you know, a lot of times, if you have people that are following through beforehand haven't had problems with their building or anything, or their roads.
But the form that would take, it would come to our board as a condition of the permit.
Right.
Right.
Of the operations.
It might. It may.
In what cases wouldn't it?
Well, we don't know. I mean, it says the planning director may.
Well, I know, but if it is, if you decide they need a bond, then that would come as a condition.
Right, whether you put in that extra sentence or not, the words or not, it would have happened anyway.
But I mean, you're not, but yes, but my point is, is that we do our work up here, we approve the permit, and then you upstairs decide that it needs a bond. Those things would not be disconnected things. They would be together as a condition. They would not be independent of each other.
Correct, yeah. Because this is in the mining permit section, it would automatically have been part of those conditions.
That's, I would appreciate having that point of clarity in there.
No, that's no problem.
Are we calling it performance bond or surety? Are we changing that?
Brittany has a comment on that one.
They're two different things. So the performance bond, to my understanding, to Jerry, is actually a check that's written to the county that's held by the county. A surety is something that's a guarantee from an insurance company or a bank or some other financial institution, saying that they have the assets or money. It's like a letter of credit, saying that they can fulfill those obligations if there was a requirement to do so. That's my understanding. I'm not a financial person, but they're two different things.
So what's the most appropriate for this? Do we want a surety and a performance bond? Do we want a performance bond? Do we want a surety bond? What is the most appropriate?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori.
I think performance bond is more appropriate for this situation.
But it says under surety, listen, complete, fair to complete, let's see, where's that? Basically, professional engineer, that improvements were completed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lori, go ahead.
Can Michelle clarify this?
Surety and performance bond, do we need both? Or is one better than the other?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. It's not an issue that I've researched. However, I would concur with Ms. Molitor's characterization. Performance bond is just the money put upfront by the company versus a surety bond, which is going to be through some sort of insurance company or bank guarantee that they have the money to pay, to reclaim, or whatever the issue may be. I don't know that one's superior to another. I think in both instances, the money, one, you have the money in hand, the other, you're assured that the bank or the insurance company will pay, should there be a claim.
So then it could be either a performance bond or a surety bond, depending on whether the company wanted to put all the money forward, or whether they wanted to use a bank to back them, or insurance company.
They do have a performance bond, if I'm correct, some kind of bonding through the state. Am I correct? Which was $20,000, if I'm correct. Maybe that would be their performance bond, and their surety would come through the county. I don't know.
You could do both. You could say "and/or," and that would be maybe subject to the discretion of the planning director or planning commission, depending on the scope of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. I think James had something to add to this. I know he added to this particular topic last time as well, didn't you? All right, come on forward.
We have bonds on all of our Forest Service spots that we do. They decide on an amount, and then that is the bond amount. Then the surety is a way that you pay for that. You can put cash up, or you can put up a surety bond through your bank. It's just a way of paying that. That's what the surety bond is.
So probably saying "performance bond" or "surety bond" would be...
Well, if you say, okay, I want $3,000 bond to make sure you reclaim this, and do what you say you're going to do. So then the mining company says, okay, they'll go to their bank and say, hey, I need a surety, I need a surety to cover this $3,000 bond. Or they'll give you cash, and the county put the cash in the deal. Or there's other, there's other ways too. You can use a CD. We use CDs, where we buy a CD. It has the Forest Services name on it, and also my name on it. That CD doesn't get released back to me till the Forest Service signs off on it, says, okay, I did everything I was supposed to do. Now you get your $3,000 back. So the surety, to me, is just a way of paying the bond amount.
Okay.
Danielle, can you verify that, what James is saying? She advised us on a lot of this stuff that we did not...
I think that "and/or," however you want to do it, either one is fine. The, my personal view would be the surety is probably the way most companies will go, because it's a letter of credit, and then the county doesn't have to handle the funds. They just have the letter of credit that they can go to the bank with. So that's why we usually use surety. Sometimes, if it's a small bond, if it's only like $2,000 or $3,000, it might just be easier to write a check than go through all the paperwork with the bank. So I think if you go "or," you're covered, and you get what you're looking for either way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
One additional comment, perhaps for now. It could state "and/or," and then I would recommend that perhaps we consult with the auditor's office. There may be complications or concerns in terms of auditor's office accounting for a large performance bond.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Can we put "and/or" in there? Does anyone have a problem with adding "and/or" surety bond? All right. Any other items of concern? 8 to 10.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sonny.
Number 5, G5, additional information. I just wondered for the planning director, if, would copies of related state or federal applications or permits be additional information you might normally request? If so, is that something worth including in this paragraph?
He's on page 8, number 5 here.
With this ordinance, those would be required with the application already.
Okay.
Just an additional information, just depends on the site and the request.
Okay, actually, yeah. And there's wording in there for performance and surety, so that's...
Which is good, so we repeated it.
All right. Any other comments up to page 10 of 18? All right. 11 to 15 of page of 18. Any comments, changes?
I have something on page 12.
Kathy, go ahead.
I would like to offer a slight rewrite of paragraph A under 7, groundwater monitoring. And I believe that you all received a draft of this in your paper someplace, but I'll just, I'll read it. My suggestion is to, after the, on the fourth line, put a period after mining extraction area, and begin by saying, the next sentence, preference will be given to wells, and then continue on with that sentence.
continue on with that sentence, located on adjacent land where the property owners have requested, and then add the word testing. And then continue on with the sentences is in writing and granted, put an ED after grant, permission for access. Strike the words and testing on, in other words, so put permission for access to their property. Am I going too fast here?
Thank you.
Okay. And then the, the last sentence, modify it to read baseline and then insert the words shall establish, delete the words measurements shall test for. So in other words, baseline shall establish, comma, at a minimum, bacteria and turbidity levels, comma, and potential groundwater drawdown due to pumping at the proposed mining area.
Cut that out.
Just some discussion up here, make sure we all have the same copy.
Yeah, did you find, did you find it?
I found it in my email. I sent it down there so they could see it because I had it printed out.
On the back of copies. Decided.
Yeah. It's.
I've had too many.
I don't know, we all have too many papers up here.
It's okay.
But you can use that one if you need it.
Here, here.
Oh, here you go. See it?
Thank you.
I don't see anything.
Oh, Nancy's comments, yes.
Oh, is that where it drove from? Was Nancy's comments?
That's, that's why I didn't, yeah, I had, separated.
All right. Any questions, comments on that? Suggested rewrite?
There we go. Thank you.
Board? Staff, any concerns? All right, I see none. That looked good to have on there so we can. All right. Any other items? 11 through 15. I'm going to propose that we strike on page 13 of 18, 9B. And I'm going to have Michelle Hoffman come up here and kind of explain why and how this is going to affect and basically the unintended consequences of leaving that language in this ordinance.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. The role of this commission is to forward the proposed mining ordinance to the board with a proof of fore or against. And so I think it's very important that this commission, as well as the public, understand the significance, or I should say, the effect of paragraph 9B. 9A talks or speaks to current mining operations and requires applications under section 320 to identify a permit limit. In this ordinance, that's defined as, or the legal boundaries of the area that the applicant seeks to excavate. State mining licenses and county permits that have been issued previously don't have this language and simply set out a legal description of the land held by that particular mining entity.
I saw something on the, are you, are you just switching computers?
Once and then we'll put it back up.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. I just like it disappeared.
So what's important to understand is that this language and language, alternative language that's been proposed, it simply states a legal description. What that means is that if you adopt subsection B, you, you'll see.
Sure, it works.
Let's see if it works.
Nope, it's not working this morning.
Our little markup pen is not working. So I point out the area of excavation in this particular map. And I think it's quite clear. That is the current pit that's being excavated. If you adopt paragraph 9B, that means the owner of this parcel would be able to mine every square inch within that legal description, not just the current pertinent area. And this is very important in terms of.
Does that mean the red border around there?
The red border.
For clarification.
Yes, for clarification. The red border denotes, and this is, this is a random Google map from a mining operation in Arizona, just, just to make that clear. So this is just for example purposes only. But if you adopt 9B, this is the legal description under the previously issued state mining license or perhaps county permit. And the, and so this is very important. Generally, when you're talking about legal nonconforming, you have, let's say, this particular mining operation. This is the mining operation at the time section 320 is adopted. So the question becomes, what is the legal nonconforming use? Obviously, you have just that permit, you have the pit area, but if you adopt this paragraph, that means they're not limited to this particular pit, excavation, the particular pit that's happening right here and now. They could excavate every square inch within the property bounder, boundary. That's also very important in terms of the Kroll opinion that the Supreme Court recently As, we often talk about grandfathering and this, this impacts all 194 current mining operations in Pennington County. Grandfathering is really talking about a legal nonconforming use. And that's basically, any existing use at the time section 320 is enacted is a legal nonconforming use. Well, it's generally accepted that when you're talking about legal nonconforming uses, you cannot expand that use. If you expand that use, you lose, you lose the legal nonconforming status. So what the Supreme Court held and, or stated, and I underlined it, was that in the Kroll matter, which sought to expand its operations beyond the current excavation of the pearly permit, that Kroll sought to expand its operation, converting additional acres of land zoned as an A1 general agricultural district to use as a quarry that had not been previously used as a quarry. So Supreme Court said they could not do that absent a mining license. The effect of paragraph 9B in the, the suggested alternative language essentially adopts what is the, what I talked about before diminishing assets doctrine. That means that mining by its very nature is expansive and if you've got a parcel of land, even though you've only been mining a quarter, corner of it, you can mine all of it. The bottom line is, is that the Supreme Court has not considered the diminishing assets doctrine and obviously has not yet, has yet to adopt that doctrine. So given the Kroll decision and given the fact that at some point, it's likely the Supreme Court will further address that doctrine, I believe that paragraph should be stricken. Because if you adopt it, the bottom line is, is as soon as 320 is enacted, and I'm not picking on anyone, it's just, I think it's important to understand, the net, very next day, Kroll could begin to, begin operations any, anywhere within the legally described property that they own that's been subject of a prior, prior state mining license.
Now, would that also, would they be able to do that without applying for our mining permit?
Yes, if you adopt 9B because essentially you're grand, you would be grandfathering in operations within the legal description on the previously issued state mining license and county, county permit. Now, the boards, this commission, the board, they can make any choices that they wish. They may choose to grandfather, you know, all existing land owned by current operations. But based upon the history of Kroll, I think you, you need to understand that you, you would essentially nullify the Kroll decision.
Any other questions?
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
So, excuse me, if I could just ask a question on that point. So then if we don't address the existing operations, what, what is their fate? What, if we, when this becomes adopted, what will the fate be of these, what did you say, 190 some existing operations within the county? What, what will happen to them?
Well, that's a very good question. And as I said, well, there is a, there has been filed a motion for reconsideration by Kroll to the Supreme Court, reconsideration of the Supreme Court's opinion. And they have briefed the, in that, and it's a matter of public record, within their petition, they have briefed the diminishing assets doctrine. We'll wait and see. I, there's been no decision on that motion for rehearing. But the bottom line is, there is, there are legal nonconforming uses. There are grandfathered rights and all of these operations, at the very least, would be able to continue to mine in the, you know, say their existing pits, the existing operations. But in terms of where that line is drawn, I can't draw that for you because the Supreme Court has yet to do it.
I mean, are we setting ourselves up for the situation where by default, there will be a requirement placed on all 194 operations or 190 some operations to immediately apply for a permit under this?
Not necessarily. It depends on, that is, that's the bottom line question that no one can answer. Under legal nonconforming use, how do we define expansion? The Supreme Court did not define that. It has not been defined yet. And that's just what I want to bring home to you. You can choose to adopt this language, but then Kroll and every other individual will be able to mine every square inch. So it's yet to be decided as we move forward. That's something that we'll have to further discuss in terms of how the county wants to define what expansion is. But I can't answer your question. I can only draw attention to the fact that this is, this is a real issue.
But are you suggesting then that we delete this? We don't address this matter at all in this ordinance at the, at our, at the planning commission level and that it gets addressed at the county, at the board of commissioners?
No. Our current ordinances and PJ mail, Mr. Conover may further address this, but our ordinance already allow legal nonconforming uses. You cannot expand legal nonconforming uses. But right now, we're talking about a legal theory in terms of what does expansion mean within the mining industry and.
So they would ultimately be able to continue their current operation. They just would not be able to expand. Any operation would not be able to expand unless they came in, if this was approved and passed through everything and became an ordinance, then they could apply for a permit, a mining permit according to these criteria to expand their operation.
Correct. But the problem is, again, the Supreme Court has yet to define what expansion is within a mining industry. So that's ultimately going to be the planning, the, you know, when these permits come forward to the planning commission, it, it's a gray area right now. But I just wanted you to understand, if you adopt this language, you lose any ability to impose these regulations for new pits that may crop up on, like I said in the picture, it's a rather large parameter, but you would lose, so up here in the left upper hand corner, they could start a whole, start digging a whole new pit. And that would be a legal, legal nonconforming use under the diminishing assets doctrine. And all I can tell you is I, based upon a Kroll litigation and prior decisions, that's, that's something that I needed you to be aware of.
Thank you. Any further questions from Michelle?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
But the, the existing permit limit for that scenario would have limited them to, as it's, as it's worded now, it would have limited them to what they had before or did their, did their construction permit include the legal boundary for the entire property?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's identified on any previously issued construction permit. I can only speak to the fact that the license and the mining permit, all previously issued state licenses and mining permits only identified the legal description of the property held. So by adopting this paragraph, then you would make the legal nonconforming use of any portion of the property they held.
Basically, that 40 acres is what it was? Was it 40 acres, I think, on that property?
I don't know the specifics about that, but.
And which property?
Kroll's.
Kroll had, there are two parcels, nine and 10. I believe there was existing operations in both parcels. I'm not sure which parcel the pearly pit was located on. But yes, if you adopt this language, then they would be able to expand beyond the pearly pit, pearly pit, which is contrary to what the Supreme Court stated, which is why I wanted to show you the language in the court case.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Based on Michelle's discussion, it appears that this would offer some, you know, the grandfathering or the legally nonconforming would protect the small operators that are probably operating in a small area and they could continue to operate in that fashion. It also sounds like, based on what Michelle told us about the GCC Dakota sale, that as that sale was done, the statute rezoned that from ag to heavy industrial. So they're, you know, they're allowed to do whatever you can do in heavy industrial. I would be curious if there's anyone in the audience that can talk about operators in between the large operators and the small operators? How this would affect them? You know, do, when you go out and you require the right to explore and to mine in a certain area, are you typically buying a small area and then you go back and expand it? Or do you buy a, a large area and then, you know, expecting to mine the whole area? And, you know, I, I, that's what I want to understand.
I, I will say, and, and the representatives from the mining industry can clarify, but most likely, these entities are buying land with the anticipation at some point, whether it's 20 or 30 years down the road, of mining that land. But all I can cite to is in terms of the Kroll language, the Supreme Court has, has apparently defined legal nonconforming with regard to the current excavation of a particular pit and limiting, limiting that excavation to that pit. So 9B is contrary to the Kroll decision and how it's, it's looking at expansion.
So Lori, do you want to hear from one of the mining companies? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm wondering, you know, it seems like, it seems like they're small and there's large. I don't know if we have anybody who's kind of medium sized.
Danielle, do you have or Brian have any answer to what Lori's asking?
Danielle's coming up.
Danielle with Pete Leanance. Is it possible to get that picture back up there of that Arizona pit? I'm going to kind of use it as an example here. So a small or medium sized operation or even a large size operation would go in and buy a piece of property like this with the intention to mine the entire thing. And that's why the current county permits would have the legal description for the entire piece of property owned by that company within these sections or quarter quarters, whatever it may be. The mine, the mine plan actually would consist of the entire property. The intention of most companies would not be to go in and clear cut and bulldoze the entire piece of property at one time to consider that. The mine, you want to do it responsibly and you want to handle it through the environmental side responsibly. So what you would do is you would typically establish a face of a mine and then that face would continue to move and behind you, you reclaim concurrently. So that entire piece of property is the mine, but you only have an open face for so far. If you go and eliminate that, as far as how it's written right now, every time you put a shovel in the ground or you drill a hole to blast or every time you take a backhoe out there, you're expanding the mine. So every single company that's currently permitted would need to re-permit instantly because they're all continuously expanding the mine. You're not digging down into the ground. You're digging and you're traveling through that piece of property responsibly. And I think that's kind of what we're doing. What we're setting ourselves up for here is if we're going to say, okay, you have to actually go out there and do some disturbance for it to be a true, to be beyond an expansion, you're going to have pieces of property everywhere. Once they're permitted, go clear cut them and take the bulldozer to them and remove every piece of topsoil so it's currently a mine. And I don't think that's where we want to go with this type of thing. So you're going to have to give something to the existing operators. Otherwise, we're jeopardizing hundreds of jobs. Every single year, we have to come up here for a renewal on existing pits that have never had a compliance issue.
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone have any questions for Danielle?
Mr. Chair, can I ask Danielle a question?
Danielle.
Yes, Danielle, please.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Just a minute, sir.
Sorry, there's a delay.
Well, you weren't done yet.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry.
Danielle, you talked about how, you know, you don't just go in and clear the whole area. You kind of, you kind of work your way back. You kind of, you kind of work your way back kind of into it. How, is that something that you pretty much, that's pretty much regulated by the D E N R?
Yeah, and it's just industry standard. It also makes good sense economically. You want to, of course, just move the material once, so concurrent reclamation is just the best practice throughout the mining industry.
So that's really described in your reclamation plan, then?
True.
How you will reclaim the entire area that's identified in the mine license?
Yeah, we would typically actually mark it out in small cells. So we would say we would have the cell opened at this time, and the cell would be reclaimed during this period also. So that's how we develop our mine plan, which is essentially what you guys are asking for in this permit. So the new ones have that. The existing ones are working under it already and haven't had compliance issues with them.
And so when you have, like, a 20 acre parcel, you show how that's going to be, you show the phases?
True. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Michelle.
I just want to point out that Danielle's absolutely right. That is standard industry practice to reclaim one area and then move on to mine additional acreage. However, I don't see the clear cutting of property happening because, moving forward, in any new mining applications and permits, it's going to define the area that you can excavate. So there's not going to be any need to go in and say, oh, I need to come in and clear cut because otherwise I'm not going to be able to mine this area, other area in the future. It's going to be defined in the permits under 320. We're just worried about how we handle anything pre-existing to the enactment of 320. And what Danielle is talking about in terms of the mining industry, that is the diminishing assets doctrine. That has been accepted by a majority of the jurisdictions within the United States. Again, I just want to point, I just wanted to point out the prob, you know, South Dakota has not adopted that doctrine, and in fact, it's impliedly has rejected it in their Kroll case. So don't disagree with anything that Danielle stated, but does have legal ramifications.
And I just want to be clear. If we strike this B, 9B, the current fallout, how that, how it will play out is, everyone will be able to continue to operate on their current license, permit, whatever they have. And only if they decide to expand or move forward, then they would have to get a permit. So that's kind of the, the grandfathering in, if you will, if we strike this and add no other language. I'm not suggesting that we don't add any other language. I just want to know where we're at without any further language.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Everyone who has an existing mining license or permit is able to continue to mine their, you know, their existing pits. But if they seek to open up another pit, and I'm only stating this based upon the Kroll decision, that could change, but based upon the current Kroll decision, then they would need to seek a mining permit if they were seeking to expand.
Okay.
So, may I ask, so that, that what you just said would be, would be the situation if we, if we deleted 9B, where does it say that? Where is that described within here?
What, the legal nonconforming?
No, the, what you just said, that if we delete 9B, or maybe I misunderstood. My, I thought what I heard was if we delete 9B, then it would revert, or it would establish a situation where all the current operators could continue to mine in their pits, I believe. But if they wanted to expand beyond that pit, they would have to apply for a permit under 320. Where, where is that described here?
It's, in the zoning ordinance, there's actually definitions of what legal nonconforming is, and that's an existing use at the time the ordinance was adopted. So that's where that, that, that covers that portion of your question. The second half is based upon the Kroll decision, where the Kroll decision specifically said that Kroll could not expand its operations beyond the pearly pit. It could not, you know, create another mining pit on additional acreage.
But you don't think we need to specifically say that in this ordinance?
No, I think we've got the Kroll case, we have the mining ordinance, or the zoning ordinance, Section 400, nonconforming building structures and uses of land. A nonconforming building or structure existing at the time of the adoption of these zoning ordinances may be continued, maintained, and repaired, except as other writers provided by this article. And, and that's Section 400.
Is there a page number? Do you have that?
Yes, that's page 174.
174.
In the zoning ordinance.
Do you have permit limit enlargement, which is, proposed expansion of a permit limit shall be considered as a new application under 320? That was on page 15 of 18 as well, under permit enlargement.
Say that again. Where is that one? 15 of 18 and...
15 of 18, number 14.
Any proposed expansion of a permit limit shall be...
But that permit limit, that's a problem.
I mean, it's not a problem with any new applications under 320 because we have permit limit to find.
Read Section 14 on page 15. Any proposed expansion of a permit limit shall be considered as a new...
Well, that would be, if they, you have a current mining application, you, you have a mining permit that's issued under 320. You've identified the area that you're going to excavate, the permit limit. So 10 years from now, if you decide you want to mine outside of the permit limit that's been identified in your current permit, then you have to reapply.
So in other words, Section 14 refers to permit limits that were established under 320?
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
So my understanding is, the problem with the 190 plus existing operations is there's no defined permit limit?
Correct. The permit limit under the existing licenses and permits that were issued are generally just the legal description of the property they own, is my understanding.
Except in certain cases, right? In certain cases, didn't we discuss in Kroll, they've got a certain defined area that they can...
That's their legal boundary.
Their legal boundary.
The parcels nine and 10.
So under section... Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
Since this is such a unique situation, it's a little different than the other legal nonconforming things we have in the county. What does staff think about a period of time to define the permit limit for the 190 existing conditions, existing operations?
PJ.
Do you phase them in?
Danielle, Danielle, do you have, do you have something on this, Danielle? I know we had this discussion, and I think we did ask Danielle and Brian the question.
I, I think maybe I'm still a little confused because we talk about these construction permits that we already have and seeing that we don't have permit limits on them. We do. It's the legal description of them. Those are the permit limits. Because when we pulled those permits, we had no offsets, we had no buffers. Those are the permit limits, the legal description of what the company owned when they applied for that. That's what they intended to move forward with. That's what they intended to mine. Those are their mines. So I feel like we're really going out of our way to regulate 194 mines just to keep it so one mine can't do whatever they want to do. And this is kind of to the point of where we can argue limits for the rest of our days, but we have permits right now for three years, I believe. Most of them average around three years. A lot of them are coming up for expiration. If my permit was coming up for expiration and this was deleted, and we didn't have everything cleared or clear cut, I would tell them to get the bulldozers ready to go out there and get that expanded so that it's not expansion. It's what we're currently permitting. And I believe you probably have 193 other mines that are going to do the same type of thing because they want to make sure they're maintaining what they already have permitted.
And that's, that's a true statement.
Right.
How many mining permits or how many mining problems have we had through the planning commission or otherwise since this, since we've started? PJ? So Danielle's correct. We did do this ordinance to regulate mining more specifically, but the bottom line is, are we making it because of one problem or because of overall problems?
That's a good question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
So do we just, do we just add something to this, saying that for the 194, whatever existing, existing operations, the permit limit is the construction permit's legal description? But moving forward, the permit limit will define, will be defined in the applicant, application?
Well, and see, that's where I might be confused because I thought I understood something a specific way, and now, now I think I don't understand it that way. Because I understood that if we left B in here, Michelle, if we left B in here, it would allow it to be the legal description of the property. But if we took B out, it would limit it to what was on the construction permit. Is that, that's how I understand it. So maybe I'm misunderstanding because when you walked away last time, I thought you said, no, if we didn't, then they could go all the way to their border. So Dobbs was like, wait a minute, hold on. Now I'm confused.
If you leave subsection B in as written, or even accept Lori's proposal, that means the existing 194 operations will be able to, excuse me, mine up to the borders of the existing legal description. Commissioner Hadcock is also correct in her question, are we having this debate because of one particular case? That's also correct. I'm only here to point out to you what the, given the fact that we just went through, coming up on two years of litigation involving the Kroll matter, what that, what that paragraph means. I'm not taking a position as to whether you should or should not delete the paragraph, just simply that if you keep that paragraph in, that's, those, those are the ramifications. Supreme Court is limited, has said you can't expand, it's limited to the existing, existing pit. That's what Kroll essentially says.
It, it sounds good to take out B, but there needs to be, or does there need to be something separated from this? From what I've seen, I, I don't know if we need the separation. Some of this is, came about because of the mining operation, because we needed to separate construction permits and mining permits. I don't know if you specifically need to do it to one mine. That, that's not good.
No.
But you, but the bottom line is, is you want protections for the citizens and the mines, and that's why this ordinance had came about.
Right.
It wasn't about just one mine.
This might be a little bit out of whack, but I think it's going to mesh, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if we're going to get to any specific language on this particular section today at all. My thought process, depending on what we decide to do with the ordinance as a whole, would we have to do it in the same motion as whether we accept or reject this, this ordinance? Or would we make, could we make secondary motions to have, get it either passed or not recommended?
I see.
Send it to the, the board? But in the meantime, also have the committee come together and discuss very specifically some definitions and the grandfathering clause that we're basically discussing, kind of give us a, a buffer to do that so that they have something to present to the board whenever it gets to the board.
I think we can do that without the committee together.
Okay.
Number one, I, I think you should strike 9B because of what Michelle's saying, and come up with different language. That's the bottom line, is what is that language? Hopefully, before we get to the board, we can look at that and see if we need any changes. But again, construction permits are different now than mining permits, and a lot of this is covered that we had issues with in construction permits with a lot of stuff, even before we even got to mines. And unfortunately, we don't have that ordinance all done yet, so it's kind of hard to relate back to it because I don't have that ordinance, but...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
I, I don't agree taking out 9B. I understand Ms. Hoffman's concerns with it, but taking it out, in my mind, leaves this thing somewhat undone. There was some language used at our last meeting, like the elephant in the room, and I, and I, and I believe that this is the, this is that. How can, how can we do all of this work and then leave 194 operations not quite sure what the path forward is on, on what they're currently doing and what, what they did to get to this point? There was some language proposed in, in some of the notes that were provided to the, emailed into the, the planning commission, and I would suggest that we try to work off some of that language as opposed to just striking it. I'm not in favor of, of not trying to accomplish this. Regarding, you know, there were some comments by, from the gentleman representing GCC, and to, to not have some sort of rules set forth saying that they're currently meeting the requirements that were set forth when they did what they purchased the property they did, and not, and not having that ability to continue to do that and having all of that be in question, in my mind, would be reckless.
I, so... I agree, Rich. I was wonder, I was going to actually, once I got clarified on how the fallout would be from Michelle, I was going to ask Jason what his input is, but it still, it still sounds that we're not really clear, and I think we're going to have to do some...
But Chairman, I think it could be under pre-existing. I don't need, see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not saying, don't do anything. I'm saying, take out item B and then suffice it. We need to do something, and I'll keep saying this, with pre-existing. I, I put this in my book, sorry.
But where? Where, where, what are you suggesting, where? Because we're specifically talking about the limit of the operation. And, and I'm, I, apparently I need to study up on the specifics of the single case, but for the rest of the folks, you know, I, I don't see why they can't be bound by the rules that were set forth when they made their applications moving forward. And then, if they decide to expand, that, that then, that would trigger the, the need to come back through for the mining permit. That's how I read it.
Right.
So, you know, the proposed language that, that was emailed in was, "For mining operations previously approved and predating Section 320, the mining activity shall be limited to the legal description, in this case, or permit limit." I guess that's, that's the big question mark. "As described by the previously approved construction and/or mining permit, and can be renewed in consecutive five-year terms. Such existing construction and/or mining permits shall be approved so long as no expansion occurs, and the applicant is meeting the requirements that were enforced when the permit was most recently renewed." Why can't they continue to do what they're doing based on following the rules that were set forth when they applied?
But that, there actually were, are no rules with regards, outside your general legal theories, in terms of expansion, there were no rules in terms of, this is how far you can go with your permit. We're solely talking about legal theory in terms of diminishing assets. That's all, and even the, the language you just read begs the question again, how do you define expansion? And that's the problem. The Supreme Court has not defined how we interpret expansion. All that's indicated is that Kroll, in their mine, opening another pit, pit on the property they own, that they've always intended to mine, would be considered expansion. So unfortunately, this is, it's a legal theory, and it's a question that the Supreme Court hasn't addressed yet. But certainly, the board, this commission, the board, they can adopt any provisions that they so desire. Again, I'm not taking a position for or against, I just want the planning commission to understand the significance.
Will we grandfather everybody else's stuff in? How do we basically grandfather them in to a certain extent and still let them operate, but still have to go? That would be when they change the perimeters of their mine? Is that what we're saying?
Okay, Deb, maybe this gentleman, who's been very patient, since this is a topic he came up specifically on, maybe he has some insight. So I would like to let this gentleman give us his name and tell us what you have.
I'm Pankratz from Keystone, South Dakota. There was a request for mining experience. I have an 830 acre property in Indian River County, Florida, that we're mining an ancient coral reef for DOT road base, as well as sand for beach restorations and things like that. Originally, we got a 10-year permit for 400 acres. When that permit is fulfilled, then we have a right to go back to the county to get a further extension of any number of acres that we request.
That's how the permit, your process is for now, right?
Yeah, and I, and I'm sorry, I'm very hard a hearing, so Travis, repeat your question one more time?
I said, that's what you have, that's how you're operating right now currently?
That's the way we're operating right now. So I don't know if that helped answer the question that the young lady had there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Duane? Okay. Nancy, I know you've given a lot of information about this and comments and everything, so let's stay on target for this one.
The state law allows, has no limit on the size of a mine license that it grants, and it has no time limit. So you can have, and you do have it in Pennington County, mines that are many sections in size where pieces of the licensed mine is not contiguous. It's off away from where the current mine is. So an expansion could mean going two miles away from where you currently are to a new piece of property, not contiguous, that's permitted under the mine license. And I don't understand what everything is saying, but it sounds to me like she's talking about, in one instance, where you have a non-conforming use. And maybe if you look at the types of situations, you can split this up a little bit, because she's talking about a situation where there's a non-conforming use, and there may be situations where the mine is a conforming use. So you may be able to split the baby up into different subsets. But at any rate, that's what... Two points there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kathy.
Considering all the information that we've received today, and I believe it is information of some gravity, I really don't feel prepared to make a decision on what we should do with that paragraph we're talking about. Whether we should, you know, delete it and not add anything, whether we should delete it and try to add something, or whether we should leave it as it exists. I really don't think that I'm going to get to a point where I'm comfortable with making a decision on that. So I'd like to make a suggestion that we consider, one... And I think I heard this from someone else before, but that we make a recommendation to approve this with the proviso that that section is incomplete, undetermined at the time, and that we work on it between now and before it comes before the Board of Commission. And I... Maybe you can help me understand if this is an appropriate or even a legal mechanism. But if we could... If you could, Mr. Chairman, appoint a, you know, like a three-person committee based on members of this body, this Planning Commission, and we work with the staff, we work with the legal advisors, and come up with a recommendation that we would have for the Board of Commission on this topic.
I think we could do it without doing all that. I think that by the time it gets to the Board of Commissioners, it will probably have some recommendations from people listening today. And we can bring those forward, and then the Board of Commissioners can make that decision. That way, you don't have to do it as Planning Commissioners.
And if there's something that you feel is appropriate, you can write it, and I'll look at it and even send it forward, saying, "Hey, this is some suggestion," after conversation or whatnot.
As Planning Commissioners, you can still do that as well for...
At this moment, I don't have a suggestion.
I think, well, since being head of the Mining Committee, I will see if I can work with some people to come up with some different answers. Nancy's been very good. Danielle and Mr. Webers have been Mr... Danielle and Mr. Teterman, Brian. So maybe we can come up with some answers from some of the public and some of the mining companies.
Okay, any further items of concern on page 13, or 11 through 15 of 18?
Yes.
Go ahead, Deb.
There's been some mention of the Planning Commission on number 12, duration. The Planning Commission may to change that to can. And then, material term.
I agree with that.
What is material term? Would it be more appropriate, it says, "Failed to comply with the ordinance"? What is basically with the material term of the current mining permit? What is material term? Anybody understood that?
Yeah.
For 12 duration renewal of mining permit? It says, "When the owner or property has failed to comply with the material term of the current mining permit."
Intend essentially the conditions.
What?
The conditions of the mining permit.
Or the ordinance? Can we just put ordinance? Comply with the mining ordinance or mining permit? Or is that my... Do we need material term? I guess I'm trying to figure that out.
Fortunately.
Failed to comply with the material term of the current mining permit. Oh, I see. Just substitute the word "condition." Comply with a condition of the current mining permit?
My reading, it is that the landowner or the applicant has a current mining permit, and those material terms will be the conditions. Is that the intent of the committee?
Or it could mean the timeline that's in their operation plan.
I think we need to change it.
Well, it could mean either or. In my mind, it could mean it has something to do with a timeline of their operation, or they didn't renew in time, or something like that, too.
So what's the term we want to use?
Depends on what you want to address.
Failed to comply with a current mining permit? Do we need another word in there?
Well, maybe... I think you're right, just to comply with the current mine permit. And that includes it all, doesn't it?
Or some...
I think there's some confusion on... Unless that's an industry term, material term.
That's why I take it out.
It sounds to me like there's some conditions are more important or more material to the operation than others. I would say that it...
Seems like there's getting...
The term material could be left out.
Yeah, it seems like there's two things. One referring to timeline, another one to conditions. So I think we just need to figure out which is which.
Well, it says, "Material change in circumstances." What else did I read? Material something. Material change in circumstances. Render the continual operation of mine a threat to public self.
Is that more talking about like a significant change rather than a material change? Would that be better terminology?
I was handed the legal definition of material. I can read it for you. A material, it's referencing material fact. A material fact is an occurrence, event, or information that is sufficiently sufficient or significant to influence an individual into acting in a certain way, such as entering into a contract. In formal court proceedings, a material fact is anything needed to prove one party's case or tending to establish a point that is crucial to a person's position.
So it put "conditions of." Is that a material term? So in layman's terms, people could understand materials term?
My suggestion right now is, since we have a lot of committee members in, maybe ask them one at a time, right now.
Ask what?
The committee? They're in here. Danielle, Brian, anyone on the committee want to offer up?
Since this one came under duration and renewal of the mining permit, the committee, I believe, kind of relied on staff to pull that from other language, so it might just be a leftover from some other language that they pulled that from. But if you just go with the condition of the mining... The condition of the current mining permit, that would be adequate. We didn't suggest material term at all, so I'm not really sure what it means.
So comply with the conditions of the current mining permit?
Operation or plant performance standards or a material change in circumstances rendered the continual operation of mine a threat.
So delete the words "a" material term and replace with the condition?
Conditions of the current mining permit. And are we putting the Planning Commission can or may revoke mining permit?
I think "may" is okay. I don't see a... May says that they can. They may not. Or are we overthinking it? I keep wondering that every single time.
Well, we might be a little bit. So we... Some of us have been doing this for years, so we really could be thinking some of this. But we appreciate everybody's help.
Any other comments up to page 15 of 18?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Sonny.
Here on page 14, on 12D, which currently states, "Mining permit renewal may be conditioned upon the remedying of any unanticipated and negative environmental impact." My question is on "unanticipated and negative." What is the need for "unanticipated" to be in here? And can that be struck out? Seems to me that negative environmental impact is the meaning of the purpose of this paragraph.
I agree. I don't know why that was added, actually.
Maybe "condition upon the remedying of any negative environmental impact."
Did you have a problem with striking "unanticipated"? But negative would still be... Negative is unanticipated as well. Something's negative, it probably wasn't unanticipated.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kathy.
I, you know, I've had some experience with unanticipated conditions that crop up. And I think that... I guess I would favor leaving it in there, because the... Let's say there's the reclamation plan covers thus and so, and the operating plan covers thus and so, which I guess now reclamation's under it. And we address all of the foreseen, likely foreseen circumstances, and you have a remedy. So... But then something else comes up. Like, for example, there's a groundwater issue that no one ever anticipated, and so it's not addressed in the plans and in the documents. And so you really can't use, like, you know, the discussion up above, where it's a condition of the mining permit or in the operation plan, because we never knew about it at the time. But it comes up, because we don't... We really don't know what's under the ground till we get there. So I do think there's a legitimate reason for "unanticipated" to be in there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't see the harm in keeping it in there, so I think it's fine as written.
Okay. Any further, Sonny?
Well, I would maybe suggest another idea, "unanticipated or negative." How would that... Would that have any problems?
Like "and/or," or just take out an "and" and put "or"?
Just say "or," because the potential issue perhaps could be, well, you know, we didn't anticipate this negative impact, therefore. Right? So I'm still not sure how "unanticipated" helps anything in here, but if it was "unanticipated or negative," then it's not conditional on both of those being satisfied.
Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I guess my... How I would really view this, it's the... Upon remedying any unanticipated condition that leads to negative environmental impact. I mean, the two do have to be kind of connected. You wouldn't want to worry about an unanticipated condition that didn't have an impact. So, you know, so I think that they do need to be connected, but maybe "and" isn't the right word. Remedying of any unanticipated condition with a negative environmental impact.
Anybody else?
It could have an unanticipated environmental impact or a negative environmental impact. Either/or of... If you keep that word in there, either one of those could affect the condition.
Yeah, I don't really... I mean, I think it's... We're overthinking again that it's...
Too much.
You're doing good, Sonny, but I think it's good.
All right, any further up to page 15 of 18?
I have something on page 17.
All right. If there's nothing else on 15 to... Up to 15 of 18, we're going to move to 16 through 18.
This is on page... Oh, excuse me. I have something on page 17. What did I say, 18? Just under performance bond, the words site plan comma reclamation plan. Strike that and replace it with operation plan, because now the operation... Reclamation is under operation, and this applies more to operation than site. So... And this is consistent with the change we made earlier up above.
So site plan and operation plan, or striking reclamation plan? Is that what you said?
Strike site plan comma reclamation plan and replace with operation plan.
Anybody got any problems with that? Makes it kind of flow still the same way.
And strike reclamation plan, too, Derry.
Yep.
Okay. Any other input on this page here?
17, there was a comment on that section 320, but to reduce the term to one year and treat the permit as temporary. Well, CUP is usually temporary and for one year. Might correct anyway. No. I'm sorry. I'm on... I covered my paper. B minerals from 507.
Oh, B minerals, okay.
It was just a comment. To be consistent, the county might consider allowing permits to be filled under Section 320, but reduce the term to one year and treat the permit as temporary until the new ordinance can be established. This would help to address these types of mines.
Any thoughts from membership?
Good, bad. I really don't think that's workable. I mean, these are big operations that require a lot of planning, a lot of investment, and to know that you're only going to have a permit that's good for one year, I just don't think that's workable.
Well, that's for maybe new ones. Because then the rules will change, and then we'll have no mining. But again, how many mining operations? Well, actually, we have uranium and stuff have come up a lot lately, not in our county so far.
I just don't think it's... It essentially would... It would really... Would really essentially prohibit, eliminate, any mining applications, permit applications during this interim time. That's what it would do, because nobody's going to apply for a permit that they only have for one year.
If they knew the rules were going to change, they might... They would still want the permit. But if we do nothing and just let them... Does this cover it good enough until we do... Bottom line, does it cover it good enough through 507B to cover those types of operations? Because if we do end up having a big operation of uranium or something else, and maybe we wouldn't, I guess I'm not... Anybody know that this should be changed to something different? Because what might happen before we get the ordinance done?
Are we overthinking it too much?
I don't know. That's why I'm saying, it's kind of like pre-existing on the other one. It's a little hard to figure out.
If anybody doesn't have anything else... Oh, go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, to be consistent with definitions, 507B is in regards to the 45-6B mines covering minerals. And I guess I would note that 45-6B does have its own definition. And so that could be changed to the definition from the South Dakota Codified Law 456B-3 parent 10. It basically just defines that slightly different than what's listed there.
Anybody want to go ahead and put that definition up there so it's consistent across the board? Since that's what we're trying to do, is have consistency.
In short, it would indicate mineral as a substance with economic value, whether organic or inorganic, that can be extracted from the earth other than the following: water, oil, gas, sand, gravel, or rock to be crushed in construction, pigmatite minerals, or limestone, sand, gypsum, shale, or iron ore used in the process of making cement.
Any comments?
I don't know. I'd be up straight, just for me just reading it.
Yes, no? Sounds good. Change it?
Nancy, you have any comment on that? Up here, SunTrend.
I would have to study it. I think it's a...
Nancy, if you're going to talk, come on up here so we can hear you, because Lori doesn't get the privilege of hearing you.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. What was that? Read the number 45-dash what? Say it again.
I would have to study it. The definition of minerals occurs like in three or four places in the statute, in different places in the statute. It's kind of all over the place. So I don't know, but it sounded like what he was reading was saying it's everything else but what's covered by 45-6, because it's anything but what we cover under 45-6.
Can you let him read that again? Okay.
Someplace I clipped all of the definitions, and there's more than one.
I'll scroll down to item 10.
You know, which makes it very confusing.
Okay. I just...
I remember the conversation from last Wednesday as well, and that there were several locations where this is defined in my... For consistency purposes, I think... I, I think we should define this, um, as the definition, and if we're, if we're trying to make five oh seven B regarding forty-five dash six B, why are we not using the mineral definition listed in forty-five six B?
No, I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I want to point out something that's actually a problem with what you have. Okay, you see that pegmatite minerals, comma, or limestone, sand, gypsum slate, or iron ore used for the process of making cement? In your version on page two, you forgot to put that or between pegmatite minerals or limestone. And pegmatite minerals gets a free lunch, and it does not have to be qualified for making cement. So when you go back to your definition on page two, you need to put that or in the right place, but I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy, that's all we need.
Thank you, appreciate it. I have just one area under the performance bond, and I had Brittany work on some language for me here. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put it, but...
I, I would propose to change it.
Oh yeah, I thought that's what we were doing, I'm sorry.
For fees?
Oh, yeah, for, you're talking for the performance bond, or are you talking?
I don't think that she's updated the document yet.
Where are you at?
Oh, I, I was letting her cut and paste while I had Brittany come up here, but that's okay.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, on the nine B issue, I just wanted to form the commission that it would be my hope to perhaps meet with, um, Danielle and Brian, Ms. Molliter, and perhaps come up with a solution. I think we need to balance the, uh, the interests of the mining industry in terms of their legal non-conforming use and their ongoing operations with concerns with the public health, welfare and safety, so I've spoken with Danielle, and hopefully we can, um, bring forward a solution to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Appreciate it. I'll let Jerry get that cut and pasted in there, and then we'll see if that's what we think is good then.
Yes, what, what are we doing there?
Just changing that definition.
Okay.
To be consistent with the, uh, state.
I just put a question mark, I thought you had something on performance bond.
Actually, I do have something.
Okay.
Not with that particular section.
When you add, when, at the request of a gentleman, you added the decorative stone and dimension stone to your definition on page two, it's now in conflict with this, because dimension stone and decorative stone belongs in forty-five dash six B. And, and in committee, we very carefully structured the definition to be everything in forty-five dash six. So, so, um, you've taken something that normally belongs in minerals, forty-five dash six B, and you moved it into your sand and gravel ordinance. So then you're gonna pull in forty-five dash six B four, which says that you cannot, when you're, when you have a minerals, um, county ordinance, it cannot conflict with state law and regulation. So when you pull something out of the minerals section and drop it into your sand and gravel section, you then bring in your inability to write an ordinance that conflicts with state laws. So you're, you're bringing, you're mixing apples and oranges, and, and your two definitions no longer agree.
Haven't we mixed apples and oranges a lot?
You're taking, when, when, when the gentleman wanted you to take something out of minerals, which is decorative stone and dimension stone, it belongs under state law under minerals, it belongs under forty-five dash six B, okay? And he asked you to take it out and put it under the sand, gravel, and rock, which in the state hierarchy, it doesn't belong, okay? So you've pulled it out of minerals, and you've put it in...
Mining operation.
Mining.
To sand and gravel and rock, okay? So then you pull in all, you know, a, a state law about mineral mining, which says you cannot have ordinances that are inconsistent with or conflict with forty-five dash six B. So you've created more headaches for yourself by pulling something out of mining and dropping it into sand and gravel. And I'm stating that I oppose that, I think you should keep it clean and make one section be about sand, gravel, and rock, and the other section be about minerals, if you go with this format instead of some other format.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if that makes any sense.
Rich, since you brought that up earlier, I think, didn't you?
It's my, it's my understanding that, um, you know, based on the comments, that there's only one mine, and it's over in Millbank or something like that, and this ordinance is specific for Pennington County. Um, and, and so I, I don't understand why, um, I'm looking at the use, the, the, when, when you're mining decorative stone and, and dimension stone, it's very similar to this, and it's not the same as gold, silver, uranium, and, and some of these other things. So, um, I don't see the, uh, I, I understand what she's saying, that it's, it, it may not, uh, match, uh, somewhere else, but, um, for this location, it seems to make, it seems to, it seems to, um, uh, be, um, similar to, more similar to the items in, in what we're proposing in section three twenty than the items that we're trying to take care of in five oh seven B.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Thank you, Rich.
Bill, you tried doing this for a year, then you really, you really get it, 'cause then you start mixing it up a little bit.
Any other comments before I, I'm gonna talk about surety here shortly with Brittany, to give y'all some information, if y'all don't mind. Uh, it's actually still on page seventeen of eighteen, uh, where it's talking about the performance bond. I wanted to make sure that there was at least some language in here that kind of defines for the county how they're gonna estimate, if you will, for that bond, for the surety bond or the performance bond, or whatever we end up calling them.
The new paper that we're talking about?
No, actually, it's still seventeen eighteen under performance bond. I don't know where it fits, maybe it fits there, maybe it fits somewhere else, that's why I wanted Brittany, she came up with some language, and I don't know if it fits exactly under performance bond, or if we need to define it in another section, but dealing with how the county is going to estimate, um, the need for surety bond, um, for reclamation, if the company shut down or whatever. Makes sense? And whether we call it surety, whether we call it performance? Well, let's, how, how do you think the county should measure it so that we can make it clear?
Well, I was looking at other jurisdictions, and I found one in Wyoming statute, and basically what they do is they have the operator or owner come forward with what their plan is. Most of them, I would venture to guess, is part of their cost benefit in their, their operations plan, they know what it's gonna cost to do those things. And I think that, um, and, and in Wyoming, their language kind of states that, that the operator brings that forward, um, and then the, the board or the commission or whoever's the overseer of those kind of permits approve it with the understanding, um, that too, if they don't, I think in Wyoming, they have something that they can estimate additional costs in bringing in personnel and equipment, um, that, that would be on top of, because they're assuming that that equipment wouldn't be there already. Um, and then there are some other provisions in here for small operators, where they would just estimate it at two hundred dollars an acre, um, as a, just a baseline, um, type of request. And then there was some other senate bills that went through that, like, capped it out at no more than two to three thousand dollars an acre, so it didn't allow them to, to have out, you know, a large amount. That was unreasonable, maybe, for that kind of operation. So those were kind of some of the things that I looked into, that I thought maybe were applicable to us. Um, I think in our, um, situation, I think in most cases, most of the operators have a pretty good idea of what their reclamation is going to cost, and I think if they brought forward a plan that kind of should detailed out, um, kind of what their reclamation costs would be, um, 'cause some of them are gonna have different types of reclamation styles, or different types of things that they're going to do, that it would be reasonable to look at that.
So then do we clarify that here under for performance bond, or do we clarify it under page eight of eighteen, under G two D X underneath the reclamation plan? That's...
I think that's where it should go here, 'cause this is, this is the enforcement, this is the requirement on eight.
Gotcha. PJ?
I just wanted to let you know that what Brittany was talking about is consistent with how we do our sureties and bonds with our subdivision regulations. It's up to the landowner, the applicants, to come up with the cost for review by the board.
So do we need any other language in there, or are we gonna, or is this going to cover outside of that state bond of twenty thousand dollars for the entire state?
I think we could add some extra language, I mean, I can just read some that is in front of me, it said, "The estimated cost shall be based on the operator's cost estimate submitted with the permit, um, plus the, it'd be the county's estimate of the additional cost to bring in personnel and equipment should the operator fail or the site be abandoned." That's basically what they put, "In no event shall the bond be less than ten thousand dollars, except for sand, gravel, pumice, scoria, or jade mining, um, that are less than," I think they have, "four acres," and then they would do two hundred dollars per acre or something like that.
They could, could, they could do these on smaller mines, because, I guess what I'm thinking is, is like up in the Pearly Pit, um, Crowell wasn't there before, so, when they were reclaiming, it didn't look like there was any reclamation by when I looked. And this was before Crowell, and then when Crowell got there, I know they were starting to reclaim some of their stuff there, but, um, so, that's where, I guess that's where I'm seeing the problem, is, okay, so in forty acre mine, that was supposed to be used for one thing, ended up being used for commercial, with no surety or anything else and no reclamation. So how do the smaller, or the, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that was just one in a million instances that I, but I always was wondering that, how did it become a commercial mine, and how, how did we get to where we're at on that mine today?
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kathy.
Um, you know, rather than get too detailed on this, like, like, as, as some of the examples that you've written, it's, why not just adopt the same language that PJ just read for the subdivisions? Because my understanding is that would be, um, the applicant, and, and only in the cases where there was a, a requirement or a request for this, but, you know, they would come up with what they thought for review, uh, and, and at that time, then that review could include things like some additional costs for site, you know, equipment on the site, or whatever it might be, but just don't leave it a little bit open for that, but the crux of it would be that the applicant would come up with the estimated number for review.
And where do we put that in language?
I would put it under four on page eight, yes.
Eight of eighteen, under four.
Yep.
Or performance bond would be A, and surety would be B.
And just make a new sentence saying that the, that the, that the perform, the amount of the performance bond, or the amount, yeah, the amount of the, the reclamation required, the amount of reclamation, the cost of reclamation, would be estimated by the applicant for review, um, by the department, or however you wanna say, the staff, uh, you know, for the, you know, as a basis for the performance bond, or, you know, something to that effect. Yeah, I'd make a new sentence at the end where it says...
Oh, new sentence at the end?
Uh-huh.
But I think she's looking in a different area, she's actually, you're looking on page eight of eighteen.
Right.
She's on page eight of eighteen.
Look under section four, eight of eighteen.
Down, down just a little bit more.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep scrolling down.
No, section four.
Section four.
Right there.
Right there.
Okay, um, so the planning director mayor, you know, require this, and then as a new sentence at the end of it, the, the applicant would submit a cost estimation for reclamation, or estimated cost of reclamation, would submit an estimated...
Cost estimate.
We can fix this a little bit, but, for reclamation, for review by the, what's the term you use, the, by the department, or, you know, planning department, yeah? Review by the planning department as a basis for the, the, the amount of bond, or the amount of bond required, or something like that.
I think that's what we kind of talked about, right, Brittany? That's right in that ballpark.
You might have to reread that, Jerry, and make sure that it flows properly and so on.
You don't have cost in there.
Danielle, um, just a question, so you guys do a performance bond, and now, um, we could end up doing a surety on you. Tell me what that means to your company? I mean, does it, is it something that if, I don't know, 'cause you're doing a performance bond and a surety bond?
Surety?
No, it's, it's all the same thing, so what you would do is one reclamation estimate, um, and what Brittany says is absolutely true, Wyoming does operate that way. However, the estimate that you're providing the state of Wyoming to do the review is already prepared by them, they have the basic numbers laid out for what each piece of equipment is, what your push-pull is, what grade you're working at, they have it all broken down, they review it every year and provide us the numbers based on fuel and labor numbers, there, it's a lot more intense than that to make sure that the fairness issue is covered, 'cause otherwise, they're gonna have to go through each one of these proposals from the company who are giving them an estimate with a fine-tooth comb and make sure they're treating everyone fairly. So Wyoming handles it differently.
So tell me, on number four, is, what the wording, tell, tell me what works for both planning and mining? That was, it's a, it's a better solution, because this sounds convoluted to me.
Me also, a little bit, um...
And maybe we can work on this to bring this...
I, I think it might be worth looking into how many actual sand and gravel operations have been an issue to where bonding would have been used in the past thirty years. I don't know that many, maybe there's more out there than I know of. Um, however, the state of South Dakota, they do have that twenty thousand dollar one that they hand, they have on all the operators right now that are working under licenses. If you're working under a permit, which would be the five oh seven B part of this whole process, um, you're not under that twenty thousand dollars, because that's hard rock, so they actually go through and they assess everything individually, so you have a much higher bond if you're operating under that one. So it's a little bit different. So, again, this kind of goes back to the same thing on, you know, we're regulating one hundred and ninety-three because of one, are we regulating or coming up with all this wording for bonding when honestly, we don't have an issue with it in the sand and gravel site? So I would ask you to look at that. Um, beyond that, I, I'm not sure there's a good way to word this, um, the places that do it, do it with very detailed numbers, limits, expenses for each and every type of equipment that you're doing, and each and every type of activity you're doing just for that fairness issue, because again, if you're not fair, and people come back in and look at the public records and see that you're bonding one company, you know, two hundred times more than what you're bonding another one, you're gonna have issues there too.
I don't think we've ever bonded one in Pennington County, am I right, PJ? Since you've been around?
So if, if, if I could just say one thing, you know, first of all, you know, the way I'm interpreting this is that since that paragraph is, um, starts out by the planning director may, may, in his or her discretion, recommend, uh, this, so that only, this requirement for cost estimates of reclamation would only apply if the planning director has recommended a, a bond, first of all. So it wouldn't really be for everyone, it would just be for the ones that the, that the planning director makes this recommendation. And then secondly, it seems that, you know, we don't need to overthink this, for example, I mean, I'm sure you have a lot of experience in reclamation, I mean, based upon all those years of experience and all these different situations, I would imagine that you have an estimated amount than cost for reclamation. So rather than doing it, you know, bottom up in terms of calculating, you know, it takes this amount to move this quantity of material in this distance and on and on, I mean, can't you just say, okay, we know what it costs, this is roughly what it costs?
Probably, but I don't know if anyone here would give their costs away for their business and want it on a public record either.
Well, but, we're not really asking for that, or we wouldn't be, it would just simply be, what do you think it's gonna cost? And I think that the credibility of a company that's been doing this for lots and lots of years, there would be a certain level of credibility that says, you know, this, this is generally what it costs.
I agree, and I think you could probably even use some, there's gonna be some numbers that'll get you close, even the guideline from Wyoming would probably get you close if you were going to do it. I just think you wanna be careful as far as just taking numbers from one or the other, and do we have the staff within Pennington County to do that kind of review on one hundred and ninety-four operations on the regularity there?
Not one hundred and ninety-four, it's only the... Not 194. It's only those that are selected for one reason or another to, for the planning director to make a recommendation that there's a bond requirement.
So what would those reasons be?
Well, I don't know. But that's the first part of this. This is the director may, in his or her discretion. And so that's, it's just, that's, that's, that's all we...
I, I think there's ways to do it. I just think it's a complicated situation as far as how we would do it. We would probably do it with a letter of credit surety if the number was determined and agreed upon. We do it with forest service all the time. A lot of other companies do, too. So yeah, there's ways to estimate it and get general numbers out there. I, it just comes into a fairness issue that I think we're probably going to see more about.
So for fairness, you're thinking, remove that last sentence we just applied?
Which is the, hold on, let me look at which one you're looking at now.
Can you do a performance bond or a surety bond for any control measures? Or do you have to do, again, Daniel, do we need both?
It, it's really the same thing.
Just how they decide to put up the money.
Yeah.
And we put that in there just...
I think, I think it's actually probably post, is it maybe post surety, I think it's probably just post a surety or bond rather than performance. I think performance bonding. We really get into reclamation bonding more than performance. Performance is usually on the construction side. I know they use that term a lot.
I think you'll pick one or the other.
Right. And it's, well, it's also dealing with the order of...
I don't think, yeah, and can probably be pulled out of there, because I don't know why you would do half and half. That's...
Yeah, performance or...
It strikes me that the fairness issue is really in the first sentence, where, where this is just a discretionary action. That, that to me would be more of the fairness issue. But I had, you know, made some thoughts at one time that there should be some, you know, some, some criteria or something. But that, you know, so I've just decided that apparently is how they want it to be discretionary. But that to me is more of the fairness issue.
I mean, honestly, you can give this, I mean, all ordinances are up for review and correction later. So you can give it a shot and see how much trouble it causes or doesn't. Maybe it's not going to be an issue depending on how many times they implement it, too.
I like surety or bond. And not all the other language, I think, just adds more issue to it.
So we want to leave it like that? Or...
Performance or surety bond. I, I think it was, were you going to go to post a surety or bond and get rid of performance?
Yep. Surety or bond. So you'll get rid of performance and put the or between surety or bond. Jerry, number three. So just get rid of performance and or, and then put surety or bond.
James has got his hand up to add a bit of information, probably how it might affect him. Come on up, James.
All this bonding thing you're talking about is over and above what has already been placed in effect with the state. And if you're on forest service, like I am, also forest service. So any bonding that you would require would be over and above what's required by the state.
Right.
Or the Fed or government.
All right. Any further discussion on that one? Any other items to address all the way up to page 18? If not, there was a request that maybe we take a quick recess, since we've been at this for two and a half hours. Hopefully we come back.
Are we done with the...
I think, if there's no further comments from the board up here that we have anything to address, then we're done with our portion of that to open up to public comment and, and whatnot. So is there any, any objection to taking a five-minute recess and reconvening at 12:35 if we do so? Or do you all want to just push through it?
Do we have to do a motion?
We will have to do a motion. I just want to make sure if there was any...
I'll make that motion.
Motion to agree with...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
I'd like to comment that I need to leave at one. I'd rather continue and finish.
Okay. So, motion. Is there a second? Lori's got to leave at one.
Second.
Motion and second. All right. We'll do a vote. Jerry, can you call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori.
I can't hear you. Nay.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. Just to make sure we're back here at 12:35 so we can get cranking real fast. My move that we reconvene, it's now 12:35. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Rule call vote, Lori. Jerry?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
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 All right. Now that we've gone through everything, we're going to open up to public comment here. Just so I can get an idea, how many individuals would like to speak on this item? All right. We'll give, we'll give at least a five-minute run, maybe give you a few more minutes. I mean, if there's only three, I, I understand there might be a few more people that may want to speak up afterwards. I'll be a little lenient on that, but I want to look at, try and limit it to five minutes, just in case there's some other major discussions that go on in there. I only see, I only saw three hands. So whoever wants to come up first?
Duane Pancratz Keystone, looks to me like this is primarily a mining bill. But you've got the contractors in development within the cities. I know of a place right across from Don's Valley Market in Rapid City. They must have moved at least 100,000 yards. To make that work for both people economically, they'd probably have to sell that material someplace else. I, I feel very strongly that you should make it strictly a mining bill, from what I hear, and, and exempt all of the municipalities and the area within their city limits from this bill. I don't know if you've considered already the cost to implement this bill, or, bill, sorry, the ordinance. You're going to have to have geological engineers. You're going to have to have hydraulic engineers, environmental, civil engineers. There's going to be a lot of input. And there's going to be a lot of just within city limits, people complaining about this, complaining about that. Everybody's going to have to get involved. It's going to be very costly. And I own land within city limits, and I know that there's plenty of regulations in Rapid City, certainly, to take care of. I have 90% of my land, about 400 acres, that's glided. It takes, takes a lot of work. There's excavation involved. It's very well regulated, up to the point where sometimes it's just not even practical anymore. So consider the future GDP of Pennington County and the further development, especially within the city of Rapid City itself. Let's not inhibit it any more than we have to. That's my comment. I feel that definitely should take the construction aspect of this thing out of the bill, make it strictly a mining bill, and exempt the municipalities.
Any questions for Duane? All right. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Next, James, would you like to come up? Thank you, James.
I'll try to make it quick. Nancy had said something about you guys changing the, the explanation of who this involves and who it doesn't. And yes, she is right. You, you would be moving off of what the state says, but I still think it's a good idea to just have the decorative stone included in there under the county. Just make it simpler for a lot of people involved. And then also, when you get ready to do your mining, your mineral mining, then you're actually going to be taking care of mineral mining. There's one other thing in 14, permit limit enlargement. I would like to see that, you know, you know, eventually we'll have to have the permits on, on all of our sites whenever you guys decide how you're going to do it. I see a, kind of a potential problem there, number 14, where if I already have a permit with you, a new one, let's say I have a new one, and I have a, have to move a little bit or do a little bit, or maybe I have to expand a little bit onto what I already have, then to make me go in and completely go through the whole process, give you another $2,000, you know, just to expand a little bit. I'd like to see something, excuse me, that would allow a person to do a little bit of expansion in a renewal situation. You know, as long as it's not a whole new pit or, you know, it's just moving a little bit. Because you never know where your, you know, where your good stone is going to move a little bit to the left or move a little bit to the right. It's hard to, to know, you know, exactly where it's going to go. So if you have a little bit of leeway there so that we don't have to, 2,000, you know, $2,000 here, $2,000 there, just, just for a little bit of an adjustment. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Nancy.
Yeah, thank you for doing all of this and for letting me speak. I don't know how to split up my time, so I'm going to try to focus on the big points and then not to deprecate anything by calling it minutia, but come to the little points if I have my time, if I have any time left. So the, the first thing that I'm going to get into here is, you all know, I've told you, we think that this should be a conditional use in every area that you're allowing it, and the decision should be made by the county commissioners automatically. No appeal be necessary, no need to define aggrieved or affected people, which you know, which you've disagreed with. I've heard that. Okay. So I, I want to get to what I think may be a court issue here, which is worrying about who can appeal, who can appeal and litigate and send you to circuit court. There, there, there is the aggrieved person, which is under South Dakota codified law 7-8-27, which I have here. They can sue the county. And then there's a different provision, 7-828, which allows the average general taxpayer who does not an aggrieved person to petition the state's attorney to sue the county. And you have to collect, I don't know, it's in here, I think, 15 signatures. And, and there's a 20-day deadline to file a notice of appeal after it's public notice. So you have 30 days to collect the signatures, write something to the state's attorney that convinces him, and that he then files a notice of appeal. So you have incredibly fast timeline for people to figure this out. But it is not only people who are aggrieved who have the right to sue the county. We can try to get the state's attorney to sue you. So this gets back into, I do not know why there is all of this attention here to try to limit who can move from something that you've decided from the planning board to the county commission. Where's the beef? Why can't somebody who objects to the fact that you're permitting a mine because they're worried about their taxes going up because they have to pay to fix the road, their taxes going up because they have to pay for the health care of all the people who have had bad lungs, who are got, you know, who can't tolerate air, bad air, the way other people can? People worried that, you know, we're going to have a super fund site or something, and we're going to have to pick up the cost of reclamation? And I don't know, I, thank you, Kathy Johnson, for actually giving us a definition. I haven't read it. I don't know what it says. But I hope I'm giving you here, I'm giving it to her. Here's your two paths for suing the county. This is what protects you from being sued, this statute. And, and I've said this before, the definition for person aggrieved is not here in the statute. It's in the sta, it's in the statute books. It's three or four pages of fine print referencing legal decisions. And the Rapid City Library threw away its statute books. So if anybody wants to read a statute book in Pennington County, they have to go to Sturgis, the library that still has the statute books, or they have to go to the school of minds, because Pennington County no longer has. And that's what you need to do to figure out what aggrieved means. But I'm getting lost here. So, okay, so we would like everybody, including the person, the general taxpayer, including the person who's covered under 7-8-28, to be able to move this forward to the county commission. Okay, so in an appeal, we object to the five-days appeal. Why? When, when we're talking about continuously forever, we hear from the mining company, how long it takes them to develop a mining application. They spent years getting this, and that justifies them having it for a longer period of time. They've had all of this time to prepare it. And so the average public is actually, could have 17 days of public notice. And then they come before you, and then they have five days to write an appeal, and then five working days, and then, you know, probably takes a while to get it on the county commissioner's schedule. But we might be looking at two months before they have to be in front of somebody arguing their case. Okay, so there's very little time for the public, and the mining companies keep telling you how long they have to spend preparing. So I, I think it's unlevel playing field. The mining companies are prepared. The public has to move so very quickly. So I'm asking for either a longer time upfront in terms of the public notice or a longer time for the appeal process. And, and when, the way this thing is written here, I think you could do a public notice in the newspaper, 17 days. It's not a 30-day notice in the newspaper. It's 30 days to the people living nearby with a letter. Okay, so...
Nancy, you're at five minutes.
I'm at five minutes already?
Yes.
Oh, God, I'd talk forever.
I just, I just want to give other people the opportunity. If not, I have no problem with you coming back.
All right, okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure. And before you take everything away, hold on. I only saw three hands. Does anybody, would anybody like to speak on this item?
Jason.
Jason, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First, let me say, I appreciate all the work you've put into this. I mean, I know this has been a very long process and, and it's been rather controversial at times. You know, from my company's perspective, GCC is interested in being a good partner with everybody. And they're going to continue to try to do that. And that's why I was glad to hear that this commission may be stopping on section 9B to sort of rethink how that's going to work. And I understand that the public will have an opportunity to provide further comments on that, and we intend to, to do so. One of the things that I, I just wanted to sort of clarify in terms of what the commission is doing and, and is not doing, and how that relates to, you know, what the Supreme Court's doing and all of these issues that touch on that. Well, I guess my perspective is this. You don't have to wait for the Supreme Court to do something for you to do something. You know, you, you heard a lot about this, the notion about diminishing assets and how that's all going to work. The only thing the Supreme Court is ever going to be able to tell you is what you can't do, right? They, they could tell Pennington County, well, you can't impose these additional regulations on people. But that has nothing to do with what you can do. And I think this board ought to take the opportunity to, you know, get it right presently, regardless of what the Supreme Court might eventually say. So with that in mind, I, I appreciate that the, the board is going to take another look at that issue. And it seems to me that the difficulty in, in the definition is over what's a use because, or what's an expansion of a use. Because every time you stick a shovel in the ground, I mean, you're expanding the use. So, you know, drawing that line can be rather difficult if, if you're looking for some type of middle ground. But that is what we intend to provide comments on, is to provide something that we think that the... that we think that the mining companies could get behind and live with in that regard, and hopefully the public would agree with that and be happy with that as well. So that's what we plan on doing, and I just wanted to share that with this board, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason. Any other audience members like to speak on this item? All right, since I see no others, go ahead, Dwayne.
I don't know if there's anybody else, but I also want to compliment you on the seriousness that you're taking on this issue. I'm very impressed as a citizen of the community. Just a couple items I thought of, the five-year permit really isn't enough, it needs to be 10, in my opinion, especially if it's a large issue, or a large mining operation, because there's so many things that come into it. And I had one more, and I forgot that. That's part of the age, I guess.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, without any other objections, I would like Nancy to see if she can finish up what she had for us.
Are you going through that whole packet?
This is all my reference material, you know, in case I want to quote something.
Nancy, we're going to-
I'm just teasing you.
We're just being a little liberal here, so we can get you to get a little bit more information out there. I would like to have Lori involved in the communication, and we know she's going to leave here shortly, so that's the reason why-
What, do you want me another two minutes?
I'll give you another three minutes, and that way we can at least have some conversation.
Okay, we also, I'm seeking for Perry Hall-Sadabon, we also disagree with the limit on who can appeal a renewal license, being limited to people who just live 500 feet away. We think that that should also be much broader, that, I've said this before, in the state licensing thing, there's no opportunity for public comment, there's no opportunity for a contested case hearing. This is local control, this is where the public has something to say about all of this. And, you know, I think you should give more people more opportunity to complain about existing operations and to appeal that. And I think there's people out there who don't necessarily know they can complain, or they don't know the agency soup, and they call up the wrong agency, get referred to somebody else, and the complaint doesn't happen. So I think you need to make it more open at the renewal process for more people to ask for a hearing and an appeal. Okay, so I'm going to move on to, real quickly, to some points, I sent this to you. Lawrence County has a 500-foot buffer around the edge of the mine, which is not an absolute, it's at least 500, and you can get a waiver to make it smaller, but they have to go through evaluation process to see if it should be larger, which is a function of things like topography, density of the population nearby. One size does not fit all when it comes to buffers, so we're asking you to look at what Lawrence County does and have a flexibility on the buffer. And I gave you, you know, the example, okay. So what else? When you're adding the dimension and the decorative stone to this, under the section 507, you have that on conditional use, and it's still in here, if you use Mr. Marsh's definition, you're still, you have decorative stones still under section 507 as a conditional use, but you also have it on this whole thing as a approved use. So you still haven't squared those guys up. This is just, this is the little one, very little, on page two, you need to put an ore four between pegmetite minerals and limestone, that's one for mining companies. You are inappropriately quoting that, and you're inappropriately restricting pegmetite minerals.
Three minutes, Nancy.
I'm sorry, should I shut up?
I'm not going to say that.
No, I could go on and on, but it's okay.
We thank you very much for your input and for your work with the committee.
And our committee, you've done a lot of work with this, Ms. Nancy.
Yes, absolutely. All right, any other further comments from the public? If not, if there's no further questions or comments for the staff, the current recommendation is approval of the ordinance amendment OA 17-02. I would venture to say it's probably recommended with all of our changes that we've added to it. Anyone want to recommend approval, recommend nonapproval? Just remember, we do have a deadline for our moratorium as we determine what we're going to do. We've talked about so many different things, even if we do send it forward one way, whether we recommend approval or recommend nonapproval, then we also talked about how to change some different areas that we haven't been able to solidify here today, or over the last month, or year, and almost two months. I'm open to any suggestions or options.
I'll get this started, Mr. Chair. I'll move to approve ordinance amendment 17-02, with all of the changes incorporated to date.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Oh, and Lori seconds. All right, any further discussion then? That'll open up discussion.
Yeah, I'd like the motion to note that 9B is not complete, is not, well, not resolved, I guess is a better word, and that we, as the planning commission, recommend additional work on 9B at the Board of Commissioners level.
Mr. Chair, it was my understanding, though, that it has to be recommended by this board and approved to move forward to the commission level. Is that not the case?
With the understanding that we are going to, and I have verified that, that we are going to move that forward, and Michelle and Danielle sound like they're going to move, taking care of some language for 9B.
Does that meet your needs? Okay.
So, I guess maybe I need, maybe some clarification. It was my understanding that this has to be essentially approved by this board to move forward to the commission. Is that a true statement, PJ? Or can the board simply just recommend this to the commission?
Without a decision?
Yes.
It has been done in the past. We'd like you to make a recommendation one way or the other, please, just make it clear.
That's why I said we could approve, we could, you know, not approve, or we could just send it up without any kind of recommendation.
So then my question is for the state's attorney, on 9B, what was the path forward on the items for 9B? Right now, 9B is still in the document as listed, correct?
Yes, it is, and I think you can approve the document as it exists, and I don't think there's any problem with adding to that motion that 9B is, still needs work. And Commissioner Hancock is correct. I hope to meet with Ms. Weber's, Mr. Smiley, Mr. Tiedemann, Ms. Molitor, and us as a group come up with alternative that will be proposed to the board on February 6th.
So you can approve as written, and 9B will come up one way or another from us through the audience as commissioners. So, again, even if you approved it with 9B, with the understanding that, I'll guarantee you, and you know that by now, if I say something, I get it done, that will have some language by the time it hits the Board of Commissioners, so there's more debate on 9B.
But I don't think there's a problem with flagging that paragraph for the commissioner's attention.
I think we pretty much did.
Right.
Thank you.
Would that require for me to amend my original motion?
I'm going to say, it's not needed duly noted at this point, that there will be changes to 9B with you guys, basically, and I will, if you want to say that you did not agree with it on there, and that's the only change.
I think PJ is going to request from the Plannings Department, though, that we make it clear.
Put it in writing, get it in the minutes. If that is your intent, put it in the minutes.
Put it in the minutes, like in the motion?
Not just in the video, put it in the motion, put it in the minutes, so it's there forever.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you approving sight unseen, whatever this set of people is going to write to change 9B?
Negative. No, it's not sight unseen.
That was not my intention, is that they disagreed with it, and that when it comes to the board, it'll be rewritten a different way, and that board will have to approve it.
Well, I mean, are you going to be submitting what everybody here saw in one piece of paper, in another piece of paper, a subcommittee's suggestion on how to change it as two separate items? Or are you going to take the subcommittee's changes and put it into the document that you said you all approved?
I'm not hearing that. The discussion, Ms. Nancy, is not done on 9B, so where it ends up at the Board of Commissioners, it'll be with, hopefully they'll watch what we talked about, and if PJ wants that in writing, let's put it in writing, and I just didn't think it was necessary, but that's all good. Let's put it on record.
Do you want to put it in record in your motion, then? Or do we want to make a-
I'm trying to think quickly how to phrase that.
To approve with special considerations for 9B to be not accepted as is?
Discussion on 9B.
You can move to approve the document as it stands, and 9B is still part of the document.
Correct.
And just simply reflecting your motion that there needs to be further discussion on paragraph 9B.
Because at this point, Rich might not want to, or some of the commissioners might not want 9B changed.
Right. So, in our discussion-
So, yeah, my motion would be to approve ordinance amendment 17-02, and note that item 9B will be further discussed by the Planning Commission, based on recommendations. The County Commission, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
That's fine. And I agree with that.
I think that's simple, and it gets to the point.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and I'll agree with it, because I was the second, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, if we're going to finish any other discussion, because I was going to tie in that I agree, 9B definitely needs to be looked at and clarified in there. Any others?
Yeah, I would like to see a copy of that before the final 9B, before the commission meeting.
Okay.
So that when it goes to the commission meeting, we know what we've changed.
Actually, you won't be changing, Bill, you won't be changing anything.
In other words, the commission can leave it the way it is, or take-
9B will be left the way it is, and there will be more discussion on it, and people will come up with, Michelle and other people will come up with something for the Board of Commissioners in case they'd like to change it.
And we can try and have the proposed language completed in time to be put in the board packets, so the public is informed, as well as the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I know where your concern is, Bill. I don't want to be saying, yes, we agreed to it, and then they write something, and they're like, wait a minute, that's not what I wanted. No, that's not our intent with any of this. Our intent is to get it, we know that this is not the appropriate language, it needs to be tweaked and changed so that it encompasses appropriately. And then, yes, I get what you're saying, we should be able to see it, so we can say, I agree to that, or I don't agree to that. At least when it goes to the Board of Commissioners, we can give our input to them as well, saying we don't agree with that, or we do. Does that make sense, Bill? Any further discussion? No further discussion. All right, Jerry, real call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Loi?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much for everyone who participated in that process. It was a long process, lots of information and lots of time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And it still has two more readings through the County Commission, so we're not done with the process yet, guys.
It is not done and over at all.
Lots of time for the public to still, and other people to still add.
PJ, that carries us to item number 18.
18, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the December 18th, 2017, and January 8th, 2018, Planning Commission meetings.
All right, any questions or comments about that? Item number 19, items from the public. If anyone in the public has anything they would like to bring before the board, this is the time to do so.
Nancy Helling. I gave you, I just gave it to her, she can see her exit and send it to all of you. This is the current state law about who can appeal decisions of the County Commission. I think this is completely inadequate, and, you know, I think the definition of aggrieved and limiting, the definition of aggrieved, which is in four pages of fine print and judicial decisions, limits too much who can appeal. And I think this thing where, if you want, if you're a general taxpayer, if a general taxpayer is concerned, you have to collect 15 signatures, get something to the state's attorney, who sort of works for you guys and isn't exactly impartial, and he has 20 days to file a notice of appeal, is just too quick and crazy. And, you know, there's no time this year to write changes to this, but I think all the county commissions around the state should look at this and create a more fair law for who can actually litigate over county decisions. And also, if there's going to be a statute here that says only aggrieved people can sue, and you need to be a lawyer with access to Westlaw to read the four pages of fine print, figure out what a person aggrieved is, this is not law that the average person can understand. So these two things here, about who can litigate the county, need to be changed, and, you know, not right now. And, you know, if I was to write something and take it to the legislature, and if you didn't talk to the counties about how to write it, it would get killed and dropped down by the Association of County Commissions. So, I'm just, you know, this is like a long-term project for everyone. I don't like this set of statutes. So, and I don't think you like them either. I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, this seems to be a fear and an issue that you have with writing this, that are people going to sue you?
Thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Any other items from the public? All right, seeing none. Items from the staff, PJ.
Just the one item, just to follow up on that email that went out about Matrix. So they have submitted what's called, oh, gosh, I kind of lost it right now, but it's a kind of a conditions report, just kind of the history of the county, and what the current conditions are, and talking with all the department heads and key staff. And that document is 178 pages, and we haven't even gotten to the comprehensive plan yet. So right now, that's split into three different sections, and staff is reviewing it. Once that's reviewed and the corrections are made, then Matrix is going to make it available to Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners and the public on the website. In addition to that, they're looking to come out for the next series of meetings in March to coincide with Board of Commissioners meetings, because they'd like to have time to do a presentation during one of the meetings in March. So that's either going to be the week of, the March, the week of March 5th, or the week of March 19th. They won't be able to be out here when the Planning Commission meets, but they are requesting that Planning Commission members attend, so we can discuss that in February. Other than that, just so everybody is aware, that ordinance amendment OA 1702, the mining one, is going to go to the Board now. First hearing on February 6th, second hearing on February 20th, unless there are special hearings thrown in between or after. Nothing further.
I'm also going to use this as an opportunity to put a plug out there for those who want to be involved in the process, go to the, I just had it, I lost it in my brain. Comprehensive plan meetings, get your input out there. That's my big plug.
I'd follow up, I don't believe that people in the community understand how powerful comprehensive- a comprehensive plan is, and how much impact it really has.
Right. You need to be out there helping shape what we look at and consider. Items from the membership.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rich.
I would just like to, again, thank everybody, you know, on the board here, and that was on the committee, there was a tremendous amount of work that was done. On the, second item is, is that I believe that there's a meeting on March 26th that I will not be in attendance at.
March 26th, you won't be at?
Nope.
Okay.
If there's a transformation meeting, meaning the stuff that is happening across the street by a restoration, I think it's the Mission and the Transformation Center, those meetings are tonight, and tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Journey Museum, if you're interested, or you know anybody who is interested.
I would also point out, do I have it correct on my calendar, that the 26th of February is also a Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, it is.
I won't be here for that one, Kathy. Oh, you're not here either? Who's gonna run that one?
I will be.
All right, Rich, woo-hoo. I will be in peer that whole week, so I won't be here for that meeting.
I won't be here either.
You won't? It's not your month.
I know, I'm just teasing.
Any other items from the membership? Seeing done, our last item is adjournment, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, roll call vote, Jerry?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
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 Bill?
Aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Planning Commission, for all your time.
Yes.
You guys did a great job.